All right, all right. Thank you everybody for coming out. Ms. Voss, let the record show that we started at officially 3 o'clock on December the 12th. This is our regular board meeting. We'll start with invocation and pledge given by, or actually I'll recognize, Vice Chairman Jackson. Tell us who we got.
Yes, I'm very excited to invite Pastor Trent Gann from Woodville First Baptist Church, if he would step up to the podium at this time. Pastor Gann has been a pastor there since 2012, and we're excited to have him here to offer our invocation this morning, or this afternoon.
Thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for your love for us. God, we are so mindful of that this time of year. God, that we couldn't come to you with all that holds us back, with our sin, but you came to us in the person of the Lord Jesus. God, that you sent us the governor that we need in our hearts, a righteous king, an eternal king, to rule over us. And Father, just as Solomon, as wise as he was, God, he was nothing without you. So I pray your wisdom on these commissioners, God, as they have an impossible job to do in ruling over people from so many different backgrounds and so many different persuasions. Father, we know that you are the maker of us all, so we just ask that you give them great wisdom. God, that you would bless people through them as they rely on you in these days. And God, we pray your peace in your people. Jesus came, it was proclaimed that his coming meant peace on earth and goodwill to people that you favor, and you favored us in him. So God, I thank you for that. God, I pray your blessing and your favor on this meeting, and I pray it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let me just consider the flag of the United States of America and consider the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Vice Chair. Now I'd like to recognize for our awards and presentations Commissioner Daley, who will be presenting a proclamation recognizing June, I'm sorry, January the 20th, 2018, as Arbor Day in Leon County.
Certainly do appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. And I would like to ask Mindy Mormon, who is our urban forester, to please come join me, and along with Mindy, the man, the myth, the living legend, Pierce Withers, good friend of mine, Reverend Withers, who is the chairman of the Leon County Canopy Road Citizen Committee. And thank you both so much for being here today. Do appreciate it. Let me present this proclamation, and I read. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas from then until now, Arbor Day is observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas Leon County and the city of Tallahassee recognize Arbor Day annually by conducting a joint community planting event. And whereas nearly 50 residents participated in the 2017 event at Lafayette Park, where 80 trees, such as the black tubelo and swamp chestnut oaks, were planted in the park. And whereas the county and the city will again jointly conduct a community planting of 165 trees, such as the live oak, the red maple, the fringe, the red bud, the nuttle oak, and sparkle berry at the Appalachia Regional Park. We're going to plant a sparkle berry just for you, Vince Long, okay? Absolutely. And whereas trees contribute to the county's sustainability efforts by helping clean the air, producing oxygen, reducing stormwater runoff, providing vital habitat for wildlife, and contributing to the aesthetics and quality of life in our community. And whereas trees in our community have become icons for the natural beauty of the capital county of Florida, also contributing to increased property values, enhanced economic vitality, and increased joy and spiritual comfort for generations of residents and visitors. And now therefore be it resolved by the Leon County Board of County Commissioners that Saturday, January 20th, 2018, be recognized as Arbor Day in Leon County. The Board further encourages citizens to participate in the planting of, wait for it, wait for it, live oak, red maple, fringe, red bud, nuttle oak, and wild berry trees at the Appalachia Regional Park. Initiate planting in their own neighborhoods and preserve and care for existing trees for the many benefits and beauty they bring to our locality. Dated this 12th day of December 2017, signed by the chairman, Nick Maddox, all the county commissioners, and attested to by the county administrator. Before I turn this over to Reverend Withers, I'd just like to say, we all take this very seriously. All joking aside, Arbor Day is very important. Our trees are very important. We are known as a tree city and a tree county here in Leon County. Pierce, I want to tell you that on behalf of myself and colleagues, truly appreciate the work that you're doing on the Canopy Roads Committee. Marion Lindley, my colleague, tells me all the time that y'all are doing amazing work, and keep it up. And we are so glad, Mindy, to have you onboard as well. Oh, hey. So glad to have you onboard as well, and look forward to working with you hand in hand, okay? Pierce, let me turn it over to you and present you with this proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, thank you for this proclamation. I just wanted to bring greetings to you from our committee and let you know that we're working hard to try and have an efficient, forward-looking, big-picture Canopy Roads Advisory Committee, and we appreciate your unwavering support of the Canopy Roads here in Leon County. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. As we're taking that picture, I have no one in queue to speak. I'll move on to consent. Mr. Administrator, are there any consent items pulled?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, you have one consent item pulled, which is consent item number nine.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the rest of consent? Motion, consent has been moved by Commissioner Lindley, seconded by Commissioner Deloge. All those in favor of the motion on the floor indicate by saying aye. Are any opposed? Motion carries without objection with Commissioner Proctor out of chambers. Item number nine, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number nine was pulled by Commissioner Proctor. It is a status report on Big Ben Cares Care Point Health and Wellness Center. The agenda item before you seeks simply your approval of this status report, which was presented to you based on a previous request of the Board. Shankton Lammy, our Director of Human Services and Community Partnerships, is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Proctor is on the way per his trustee chief of staff. Would you guys like to take up the item now and for a motion to second, or continue that item until he arrives? Board's pleasure.
I'd vote it up or down.
Board's pleasure.
Can I weigh in, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I mean, they've received little or no money from the county, to the best of my knowledge. They get CRA money, am I right? So it's a status report. I think Rob Renzi's doing great stuff down there and transforming that whole part of the town, and I, my hat's off to him, and I'm happy for what they're doing. Commissioner Proctor may have a different line of thought, and he can talk about it during his comments, but I'd say we go ahead and pass the status report, since there's really, we don't have a lot of jurisdiction over them in the grand scheme of things. I think it's just an update on what they're doing. Unless there's something factually wrong with the report, I didn't.
There's a speaker card on the item. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since the item has been pulled, I have received a speaker card on item number nine from Dr. Holyfield.
Dr. Holyfield, how you doing, sir? Name and address for the record, please.
Roxanne Manning would have dropped the doctor, according to an email she sent to Rob Renzi. I have been banned from a public health care facility in my own neighborhood. This is the neighborhood I grew up in. This is the neighborhood from which I walked to Segregated Family High. Not only was I banned, Rob Renzi called the police on me at a ribbon cutting for Big Ben Cares. When a leadership Tallahassee white man calls the police on a black man like me, good things seldom happen. I can see the Democrat headline, "Black Man Tased at Big Ben Cares Ribbon Cutting." Or perhaps, "Black Man Shot Dead at Big Ben Cares Ribbon Cutting." I suspect Renzi would have preferred the latter. This is the second time Renzi either called or threatened to call the police on me. The first time occurred at a conference at TCC on May 10th, 2017. Does this mean that Renzi has some kind of pathological fetish about calling the police on black people? Is Renzi's subtext, "Holyfield is nothing more than a black criminal thug who should be in jail"? The real reason for Renzi calling the police on me was retaliation for reporting all those cancer-causing agents on the Big Ben Cares work site. I might add, I contacted DEP, and they said that if I hadn't told them about all those cancer-causing agents, they wouldn't have known about it. Nobody from the city called, nobody from the county called, nobody from the Leon County Health Department called. Matter of fact, if I hadn't told them about all that benzol, apironine, and chromium, and all those other cancer-causing agents, y'all wouldn't know about it now. Real question is, did Big Ben Cares try to hide that from DEP? Did they try to hide it? And if I hadn't called, as I said, y'all wouldn't know about it now. So I did y'all a favor, because you didn't do your own homework. Big Ben Cares also banned Sylvia Hubbard, a 60-year-old great-grandmother. They banned her from the building. Hubbard lives on the South Side. She and the children she cares for will be presumably denied all medical services at Big Ben Cares. Given the fact that Hubbard cannot enter the building, this presumably would even include all medical services. Who will Big Ben Cares next? Who will Big Ben Cares ban next? Will it be Commissioner Proctor, who Renzi has called a liar? Will it be Dying Cox, who participated in the protests against Big Ben Cares? Will it be Bill Tucker sitting here, who also participated in the protests? Black people are used to being banned in Tallahassee. TMH banned me for 17 years, from 1947 to 1965, referring that I die rather than be admitted to that hospital. I was admitted to FSU before I could be admitted to TMH, an invitation that I declined. Black doctors were banned from family practice residency program at TMH for 12 years, from 1971 to 1983. Black students at Family High were banned from having new textbooks. We got the old ones after they were discarded by the white students in Leon. Is the banning of black people that Renzi doesn't like, is that any different from what happened to black people under the apartheid regime in South Africa? Big Ben Cares should not receive another dime of taxpayer money. It was a mistake in the beginning, it is a certain mistake now, and when y'all did that agreement between Big Ben Cares and the CRA that Roxane Manning rammed down our throats, y'all don't even know about it. You don't know about that agreement from January 2017. It requires Big Ben Cares to do absolutely nothing. There are no performance criteria. Renzi said in an article that the agreement requires them to see the uninsured. Untrue. They really, it's a reporting document. They report the number of uninsured that go through that building, but if that number is zero, they still get the money. They report, and I just need a few more, they report the number of people that they hire from the community, but if that number is zero, they still get the money. So that whole document...
You need one more minute, because I actually gave you about...
Yeah, 30 seconds. That whole document is a farce. That agreement, it never came back to the Board. It never came back to the Community Advisory Council. Why wasn't it brought back to the CRA Board? It was signed January 24th, 2017, and it gave Big Ben Cares everything they wanted. You, you, you don't even know about that document. You don't even know about it. January 2017, done under the cover of darkness. So again, I repeat, for the reasons stated, Big Ben Cares should not receive another dime of taxpayer money. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Next speaker? The next speaker is William P. Tucker. Mr. Tucker, name and address for the record, please, sir. Yes, sir?
Thank you. My name is Bill Tucker. I'm a retired faculty member from the Department of Physics at FAMU. I live at 2802 Primrose Lane. I understand the danger of having chemicals in the ground. It is easy to say that they're not there now, but time has shown, history, that these things can leach out over time, and they can be very, very dangerous and cause problems that we don't even know about yet. And I, I'm against this Big Ben Cares Center. I was there when we, when they opened up, and I was indeed marching around with a placard protesting the banning of Dr. Holyfield from the site. I wasn't banned, because I was able to walk on, but he was, and I think that was wrong. It is a community operation. As I understand it, it is not, at least initially, was not going to be open to people who did not have insurance. Now, I heard that verbally they say they will, but have you seen anything in writing, per se, to say that in fact, it will be open to the uninsured? You need to change that charter if it isn't there. I do, I agree too that it should not be funded any further. It is there now, but you certainly shouldn't get any more, they shouldn't get any more money, and it was a mistake to do it in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker. Commissioner Proctor, you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I pulled this item, Commissioners, that if we ourselves choose not to do anything as a body, I felt and believe it very important that this entity in District One, comments made about what I believe is less than a stellar representation of leadership coming from Ms. Roxanne Manning with the CRA, and also with letters that have gone out from an entity which public dollars are supporting. And I have looked through and asked our county attorney to look through and verify the agreement, which is between CRA, which is between Big Ben Cares, whether or not there's any basis in the contract that affords Big Ben Cares to arbitrarily select members of the public, which they deem is unworthy of coming on their grounds. And they, through their lawyer, have asked that Ms. Sylvia Hubbard be banned from this property, and that Dr. Ed Holyfield, a cardiologist and doctor, not be afforded presence on their ground. For $1.5 million, which is what this organization was given, and in some respects, there may be members here, Chairman and members, who believe that this is a CRA issue, and therefore the county commission should not necessarily be privy to this conversation. But if that was true, why is it in this book before us today? So I take that somebody has taken, that a report was warranted for the county commission to review, and inasmuch as it has been presented before us, I have waited to comment on this public document, which the county commission is being submitted, a report. Clearly, I want for the record, Ms. Voss, to show that I believe that we, as a county commission, should weigh in, and that we at least seek to find a legal basis for Dr. Holyfield and Ms. Sylvia Hubbard being banned from Big Ben Cares. They were banned prior to the first day of Big Ben Cares opening. They were banned and had never been on their property site for anything. The doors hadn't opened. And that arbitrarily, they could select who should not be there, is an interesting diagnoses. The first diagnoses of people who not only have, don't have HIV, but Hubbard is a provider and caretaker for those who do have. But what is it that they have that's so problematic that they are unworthy to walk on the health grounds in District One, in the South Side, in my district? Number two, I think Commissioners, we're owed some kind of understanding of what legal basis these two citizens who are property taxpayers in our community would be deemed unfit, unworthy, and stay away. They haven't done anything. The building wasn't open. Nothing had occurred. There is something illegal, immoral, and all of those things about this letter. And because we have given a million and $5 to this group, I think that there should be a rescension of the letter that was sent. And I'm asking, Mr. Chairman, consideration for our body, asking for clarification of those letters, and because we're sending public dollars now and there, that they would rescind those illegal letters that would ban Dr. Ed Holyfield and Sylvia Hubbard. Secondly, Dr. Holyfield is absolutely right. There was contamination on the project site, and there were promises that it would be cleaned up, but the cleanup did not occur. And I'm thankful, I'm grateful that Dr. Holyfield weighed in with a Florida regulatory agency, which is Department of Environmental Protection, which is to protect the environment, protect the people, the birds, and earthworms, and all like that, and he did the right thing. And I stood with him, and we stood together, not even on that site, but across the street on the Walgreens sidewalk, to indicate to the public the report that had been rendered by DEP, and therefore was, it warranted what he said in fact. Now, the issue of Bond, over and over, if you look into attachment two on page four of this report, we find that Ms. Manning represented to us that the BBC, Big Ben Cares Insured Patients, and Bond Community Health and Neighborhood Medical Service Center serves uninsured patients. Here it is again. She noted, "Big Ben Cares serves insured patients." This is in our minutes, public record, and Bond and Community Neighborhood Center serves uninsured patients, and the three organizations currently have an understanding of who serves Ladies and gentlemen, this is not true. Later in these minutes, Commissioner Proctor stated, without the memorandum of understanding between Big Ben Cares and Bond Community Health Center, he would not support the motion. He requested additional language be added to address their role in supporting the uninsured. So this is like McDonald's, which is down on the corner of Orange Avenue and Monroe. This is like McDonald's saying, "We're going to take all the people who got money. We'll take them. And everybody who ain't got no money, go across the street to Burger King. You ain't got no money, go to Burger King. But if you got some money, we'll, we'll see you." So to the people of the South Side, if you got some insurance, come to us. If you ain't got none, go see Bond, go see Neighborhood Health Services, they'll feed you. That's exactly what this is. And so, there's a problematic here. There's not a public memorandum of understanding, other than what we have as declarations. I called Dr. Robertson today to find out what is the status of this, and whatever the status is, it can't be made public. That ain't good, because this is public dollars going to Bond, public dollars going to Neighborhood, public dollars going to Big Ben Cares, and all of that. General Counsel, is there any precedent that you've discovered that we have, anywhere and anybody at CRA, and I've read that CRAs have done some unique things, that we have financed, any CRA has agreed to pay to bank know to be a guarantor for loans? Are you familiar in your discovery?
I have not found any.
Okay. What we have in our minutes on page four is that Ms. Manning stated, there's no urgency, no urgency to my question about why are they seeking to move so fast, in particular without a MOU. But Ms. Manning said, "In order to ensure bank financing, a guarantee of funding is needed to ensure funding sources for the project." She stated, "There is no urgency, but in order to ensure bank financing, a guarantee of funding is needed to ensure funding." So the CRA is used to guarantee for the bank, that there is some guaranteed money, and short of that, this project could not occur. To place the weight, to place the weight of a governmental agency behind a private loan is, I've seen a lot, you all have allowed me to be your chairman before, I've signed a lot, I have read a lot, but I've not seen any local government pledge to be a supportive guarantor for funds for private entity. This issue went on, I voted against it. Commissioner Maddox voted against it, and Commissioner Maddox voted against it because he would not support the motion, because the CRA would not receive tax increment revenue for this project. So this ends up being a grant. There's no tax revenue to come back for money that we've given. And then I'm going to try to wrap this up, Mr. Chairman, real quickly, and I appreciate you pulling this item. I'm not sure if I copied you all, but I asked the city manager, and I'm not ashamed to say publicly, that I asked the city manager to fire Ms. Manning. And when you look at the communications between, that we received between correspondences at 5:41 a.m., 6:56 a.m., there is an inexplicable closeness between the applicant for the CRA funds, which was Big Ben Cares Renzi, and our administrator, Mrs. Manning. I just don't know that everybody gets a chance to communicate with the CRA directed at 5:41 a.m. in the morning. And then there are a series, a plethora of communications on Sunday, on a Sunday, and our offices are closed. It's not fair to our staff that they have to answer questions on Sunday all day, and there are communications that go from a.m. to p.m. on Sundays. Something is irregular in this. I'm not sure if I gave you guys a copy of this document or not, but there's enough to, that you've heard me say previously. I wanted for the record to pull, to pull this matter, and I continue to say that there is something very, very irregular in the attitude, the disposition, and all of these things which have come to deny citizens access, and that we are funding and paying the first four years of the mortgage for this institution. It seems to me that it's unprecedented. There is no other peer. If it is, it's a very short road call. This is unfounded, and I wanted to make sure that I was able to vote against the acceptance of this report, Mr. Chairman. So I would go ahead and move that we not accept this report for the... So I would go ahead and move that we not accept this report for the reasons of which I have articulated in public citizens. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Motion been made not to accept the report as a second. Motion dies for lack of a second. Second has been moved by Commissioner Delo, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. Any more comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Or any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries six to one. Commissioner Proctor in dissent. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to the general business portion of your agenda. I have no speakers, cards on citizens to be heard on non-adjaded items. With that, the next up is Agenda Item 13, which we talked about extensively yesterday. As you recall, commissioners, during the board's, a very comprehensive discussion on resilience at your retreat yesterday, at that time, I mentioned to you that we were becoming forward at today's meeting with our after-action report and a brief presentation to you on that related to Hurricane Irma. Commissioners, consistent with our comprehensive emergency management plan, we compile an after-action report following every major emergency within 120 days of the incident. Today marks 89 days following the deactivation of the Emergency Operations Center on September 14th, again, due to Irma. As you will call, just a year ago, we presented the Hurricane Hermine, we have to get our hurricanes straight around here, the Hurricane Hermine After Action Report. In that report, we identified 110 findings and 80 specific recommendations involving major enhancements to our preparedness, response, and recovery capabilities. Only 162 days after Hurricane Hermine made landfall, we began tracking Hurricane Irma. At that time, in less than a year that had transpired, we had implemented 77 of our 80 recommendations on Hurricane Hermine. And without question, those helped us very significantly in our response to Irma. And just like Hurricane Hermine, commissioners, we fully utilized our experience with Hurricane Irma to extract every possible lesson learned to make a strong response even stronger. Today, we're presenting to you the Hurricane Irma After Action Report, which contains 95 findings and 65 more specific recommendation to continue to enhance our resilience and our ability to respond to future disasters. Upon your acceptance of the report, commissioners, of course, we will immediately put those recommendations in place. In a moment, you'll hear from Andy Johnson, Kevin Peters, and Matt Cavell, who will summarize just a few of the many highlights from the report and its key recommendations. While today's presentation will just scratch the surface, the after-action report before you, of course, contains a very thorough analysis of all phases of our emergency operations relative to Irma. Before I hand it off, commissioners, to Andy, I want to take a moment to thank our county staff. As you'll hear in just a moment, we had, and as we talked about yesterday, over 530 county employees activated in response to Hurricane Irma. And I also want to thank our many partners, obviously, who we could not do it without, literally dozens of those which are included in your item. And finally, I want to thank the board for your support throughout the event, especially Commissioner Daley, who was chair during Irma. He'll never forget his time as chair this time around and who is always accessible to us and always available to us so that we could act quickly and responsibly throughout the storm. With that, I'd like to ask Andy Johnson to begin our presentation.
Thank you, Vince. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Pleasure to be back presenting an after-action report. Vince mentioned it was just a year ago that we presented either Hermine report. Yesterday, you heard about the extensive efforts that we at Leon County have taken recently to build the resilience of our community as well as of our organization. As you know, many of those activities and efforts were identified in the Hermine After Action Report. And today, you'll hear about how those efforts specifically contributed to the success of our operations during Hurricane Irma. And so, of course, we're excited to present this report to you today, which will continue to serve as a roadmap to continue to improve and make our strong response and recovery capabilities even stronger, as Vince mentioned. Following any large-scale emergency such as Hurricane Irma, we conduct an extensive review of our operations to determine what went well and to make specific improvements when we're starting to show we're here to continue to become stronger and more prepared for the next one. The after-action report we're presenting you today reflects the results of that review following Hurricane Irma. As Vince mentioned, the report contains 95 findings and 65 recommendations. Of course, we're not going to address every one of those today. However, we will highlight several that include significant enhancements to our plans and operations. And of course, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. So for today's presentation, commissioners, I'll start by providing a quick overview of the Hurricane Irma After Action Report. I'll then hand it off to Kevin Peters to provide us a recap of Hurricane Irma as well as our operations during the activation. And he'll also highlight some of the specific improvements that we've made since Hermine that helped us to become better prepared for Hurricane Irma. And finally, Matt Cavell will highlight a few of the major findings and recommendations in this report to continue to enhance our capabilities. Just a quick overview, commissioners, while we were still in the recovery phase, staff began the work of compiling this after-action report. And as we do in compiling these reports, we made extensive efforts to incorporate feedback from not only the personnel involved in the activation, but citizens as well. And we did that by holding eight debriefing meetings following the storm with Leon County staff and personnel from our partner agencies. And we also hosted two community listening sessions to learn from citizens who were impacted in different ways by the storm about how we can continue to make our, how we can continue to serve our community even better. Just as a quick overview of the structure of the report, commissioners, as you can see on the screen, the report's comprehensive and covers all aspects of emergency management from preparedness to response to recovery and mitigation in the future. Quick overview, section one, of course, introduction, background material on the structure of the report. It also includes an overview of the structure of emergency management in Leon County. Section two discusses our various emergency plans, our training protocols, and the county's efforts throughout the year to keep our community prepared and informed. Just as an example of some of the findings and recommendations that you'll find in section two, discuss the enhancements to our outreach capabilities since Hermine and the area of communications and public information, which Matt will talk about in just a moment. Section three of the report provides an overview of Irma itself, the weather impacts associated with the storm, and preparations that were made in the EOC and in the field. This section contains findings and recommendations related to our inter-agency coordination. For example, coordination with Leon County schools about school and office closings and things of that nature. And section four is kind of the bulk of the report that discusses our operations during the activation. Here, we include findings and recommendations about sheltering operations, debris collection, road clearing, communications, public information, and much, much more. Section five includes some additional findings and recommendations related to facilities and logistics supports at the EOC. And finally, section six concludes the report. So at this point, commissioners, I'll hand it over to Kevin Peters to walk us through our operations throughout the activation.
Thank you, Andy. Good afternoon, commissioners. We began monitoring what became Hurricane Irma on August 30th, 12 days before Irma affected our community. On September 4th, Irma made a significant track shift towards South Florida, which led to on September 5th, Monroe County ordering evacuation of the Keys. Other South Florida counties followed on September 7th. At this point, we are in a posture to serve as a host community for the evacuees from South Florida. However, on September 9th, Irma's track had continued to shift westward, placing Leon County in the direct path of a potentially dangerous storm. At this point, we shifted to a risk posture and were in a position to implement the lessons learned from Hurricane Hermine. The weather stats on Irma, it was a monster storm. At its peak, it was a category five with winds of 185 miles per hour. The tropical storm force winds extended 200 miles from the center of Irma. And at one point, Irma's air cone covered nearly the entire state of Florida. In Leon County, as Irma passed, we experienced seven and a half hours of continuous tropical storm force wind gusts with our maximum wind gust at 54 miles per hour. We also received three to four inches of rain. The wind speeds were comparable to what we received in Hermine. However, the duration was several hours longer of tropical storm form wind gusts. The preparations in the Emergency Operations Center, they began well before the landfall and approach of Irma. We activated on September 5th and continued our activation through September 14th for a total of 160 hours. During our activation, 47 separate entities represented in the Emergency Operations Center, both local, state, and our community partners. As County Administrator mentioned, over 530 Leon County personnel from 20 different divisions and departments served in the Emergency Operations Center as well as in the field. Our citizens' information line fielded over 3,000 calls from citizens requesting information. We conducted 15 conference calls with our partner agencies. These conference calls are important because they are the signal to the agencies to begin taking their preparatory actions outlining their emergency plans. At this time, we also enacted an extensive emergency public information program, which Matt Cavell will discuss in more detail here shortly. But I did want to highlight that we did conduct three pre-landfall press conferences as recommended by the Hurricane Hermine After Action Report. Press conferences highlighted what, to the community, what to expect from Irma's impact, what Leon County government was doing to prepare for Irma, and what the citizens can do for themselves to be better prepared as Irma approached our area. Again, we're only hitting the highlights here today. The Hurricane Irma After Action Report is a comprehensive record of the actions that we took in emergency response, and the details can be found within it. Irma did present serious challenges, and we met the community's needs during the most extensive emergency activation in Leon County's history. Throughout Irma, our objective was return to normal as soon as possible. Through the coordination in the Emergency Operations Center, we did just that. Some of the highlights of our emergency actions include Leon County Public Works' pre-deployment of crews, co-located with electric crews to quickly clear roads. The peak of the severe weather arrived during the day on Monday, September 11th, knocked down hundreds of trees throughout our community. But by 10:00 p.m. that evening, Public Works had cleared all county public roads. This is a credit to the capabilities and dedications of their staff. We had the largest emergency shelter operation in our county's history. We activated 11 emergency shelters. We housed over 3,000 citizens, a combination of our local residents as well as those of evacuees from South Florida. This also included 300 pets that were with those citizens. And 40,000 cubic yards of storm debris was collected following the storm. All debris was collected from public and private roads by October 26th. That was 45 days after landfall. There are still some communities in South Florida that is collecting their debris. And again, as we've mentioned, and quite proudly, over 530 county staff participated in the activation, as well as hundreds of partner agency personnel and volunteers. Again, as we discussed in yesterday's retreat, Leon County is more prepared and resilient than ever. This is a direct result from the county's commitment to continuous improvement and implementing the lessons we learned from the Hurricane, sorry, Hurricane Hermine After Action Report. Hermine's After Action Report resulted in 110 findings and 80 recommendations. These served as the guide to enhance preparedness, particularly in programs geared to assist the public with their preparedness. Our Build Your Bucket event, we saw a very marked increase this year. We had over 1,000 more attendees over our 2016 event. We started the event in 2015 with 500 attendees. I believe we have a typo here. I think it was 350 at our 2016 event, and 1,300 2017. A direct result of the interest that the public has in preparedness. Our Disaster Survival Guide, again, totally redesigned, as we mentioned yesterday, from just a simple hurricane survival guide to an all-hazards preparedness program booklet. Our downloads on this guide increased to 7,500 this year from 700 just a year ago. And the Citizens Connect mobile app, before Irma, there were 1,600 downloads. During the week of Irma's impact, we had over 12,000 downloads of the app. And our Emergency Information Portal, our online web presence for emergency information, during Hermine, daily visits were almost 11,000. During Irma, we had nearly 33,000 visits per day. So an immense amount of interest in the information that we make available during a disaster. Within our office, the emergency management, we have a very robust training program. Since Hermine, we've conducted 12 training events at the Emergency Operations Center. And we did host our Hurricane Tabletop Exercise in June 2017. That was, at the time, in our minds, our chance to test the recommendations from Hurricane Hermine because we had no clue Irma was going to come this year. So for us, that was kind of our make or break moment to find out if the things we had learned from Hermine were the things that we could put in our plans to move forward. And the biggest lesson from Hermine, and probably one of the biggest improvements that occurred during this incident for Irma, was a realignment with emergency management under the Board of County Commissioners. This alignment provides greater coordination, access, and awareness of the county's resources, as well as a coordination of information and resources with our citizens and our community partners. Every emergency presents new challenges and opportunities for improvement. The unprecedented scale that Irma had, leading to our response to recovery operations, gave us a unique perspective and has allowed us to, again, review our policies and procedures so we can make a strong response even stronger. With that, I'll hand it over to Matt Cavell to discuss some of those major findings and recommendations from Irma.
Thank you, Kevin. Commissioners, the realignment of emergency management back into the county afforded us those recommendations to improve not only our plans, but service delivery to our citizens, the man-on-the-street approach, for how it affected what we did for Irma. And we're looking forward to instituting those recommendations that come after Irma as well and learning about how we can improve. Now, for Irma, what we had seen from the recommendations for Hermine were that we got the roads clear faster, we were able to leverage resources throughout the county such as generators to keep traffic lights on intersections on and available, the further integration of the Office of Economic Vitality ensured that we knew where fuel was and when it was coming to our area. That was a major concern of citizens at the time. And our public information allowed us to be able to promote GasBuddy and other sources to get that fuel. In addition, our further integration with tourism following Hurricane Hermine After Action allowed us to make those rooms available and vacancies available, as well as for our citizens and also mutual aid workers to, again, restore our community to normal as soon as possible. Again, that's the impact, not only of the plans, but the operations of what we do. Now, as you have seen in your Irma After Action Report, there are a few to highlight as it relates to shelters. So when you run the largest sheltering operation in the history of Leon County, there are obviously opportunities that you see to improve. We have already had initial conversations with Leon County schools to build a backbone of their school staff as shelter workers and shelter managers, as trained and affirmed by the American Red Cross. These initial conversations have been very helpful as they made 11 facilities available to us. And to be able to continue to use their staff to improve shelter operations means that we can get resources from shelter locations to other shelter locations faster and that we can do better in future shelter operations, even if they exceed the number of what we sheltered for Hurricane Irma. In addition, the second is debris removal. So in debris removal, we know that while we picked it up in 45 days, we can always do it faster and better. So by reviewing our debris removal contracts, we can review and update our debris removal contracts. We can hold our debris removers accountable for expectations and responsiveness. And in addition, we can set baseline expectations that meet our community's needs, so the amount of resources that they would bring into this area. In addition, you'll be seeing, coming back before you as part of the budget cycle, an opportunity to get more and additional Public Works resources so as to complement debris removal in the future, and then to also work with them for day-to-day operations and public works. The third finding is communications and public information. Again, we have said that we found, we were able to institute a campaign that had 5 million reads and views and listens to all of what we had for public information and preparedness to build resilience. We are looking to keep those tools in the toolbox and to sharpen them and to do even more with the public information tools that we have instituted in the last hurricane season and to continue, as was discussed in your board retreat yesterday, our partnership with Flash and to become Hurricane Strong County. In so doing, those three big recommendations and findings are really just, again, the high points of what is in your report. However, those three, taken in concert with the other 62, will make us even a better community as it relates to disaster and to make a strong response even stronger. At this time, I would like to pass it back to the county administrator.
Thank you, Matt, Kevin, and Andy, all of you commissioners. That concludes our report. Obviously, very Obviously, very comprehensive, but we're happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Commissioner Daley, followed by Commissioner Proctor.
Do you have any public comment first on the item?
Thank you, Commissioner. We do, we have one speaker card, Amy Datz.
Name me that just for record, please, ma'am.
Thank you. My mother was 93 years old. She moved to Florida in 74 and had lived through 40 years of hurricanes. She lived in Martin County, but I think that this lesson is applicable to this county as well. She was in a nursing home. The nursing home lost power, and the Martin County Fire Department moved her to a shelter. The shelter was crowded. She picked up the flu and then pneumonia and then died. And I would like to, I'm trying to work in the legislature, but I would like to also mention to you that you might consider, is to get these nursing homes' generators, keep the elders, someone over 90, even over 80, if they're in a nursing home, keep them in the nursing home so that they aren't, have to go through the disruption of being moved and have to go through the exposure to the huge amount of germs that are in these shelters. People may have germs. So, that would be my request, that you look into potentially having nursing home folks shelter in place, rather than move them into large crowded shelters, so that they don't have to suffer the tragedy that my mother suffered.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner?
Well, first of all, Amy, I'm sorry to hear a bunch of family news, and I appreciate you bringing that issue to us here at the local level. I want to congratulate staff on a fine After Action Report with these findings and with more recommendations. One thing that I have learned about Leon County family is that we are not too proud to recognize when we have things that we can continue to work on, and you have done that in a very expedited manner. I want to comment on one thing that I've already mentioned to the county administrator, that I'm pleased that we're taking action on and bringing back. Probably the one thing that caused me the most stress and heartburn was after Irma and before Nate hit, we had a lot of debris on the ground. Now, we had a very interesting situation because of what was going on in South Florida. You had a lot of local governments down there that had not pre-negotiated their debris removal contracts. As a result, there was competitive bidding going on, and as a result, a lot of people in the southeastern United States that were not already heading over to Houston were heading to South Florida, because quite frankly, they could make a lot more money on hauling than here. And in fact, I think at some point, we were sending out all calls on a nine-hour radius or a six-hour radius, trying to bring people to Tallahassee. So we had Irma, we cleared the roads, we did well, we began with the residential pickup, then all of a sudden Nate is bearing down on us. And there was a couple of days where we're sitting there thinking, we've got debris on the ground that's very dangerous with hurricane winds or tropical storm winds, we have to get this debris up as soon as possible. There are three things that I think saved us. Number one was our management team, and the fact that you implemented a strategy, first and foremost, as quickly as possible, and did a tremendous job. Number two, Public Works worked around the clock, along with other members of the Leon County family, to try to gather as much of the debris as possible. And I will forever be grateful for Public Works, in particular in this particular incident, for the hard work that they did. And quite frankly, number three, the storm missed us. But I am glad that one of the recommendations that you're bringing back to us and that we are going to pursue is, heaven forbid, wherever in a situation where we are directly impacted by other local governments that have been impacted as well with storm removal, how do we avoid a similar situation like that? You know, do we need to look at our contract with Waste Pro and further engage them more in storm debris collection? How do we ensure that we have enough companies in place that can help out Public Works? And so, I just wanted to note that I was very pleased that that was identified, it has been addressed, it will continue to be addressed. I look forward to the budget item coming back to us at some point, because that is a very important aspect of storm preparation, cleanup, and being able to move forward. Now, I know you have other speakers in line, but I will go ahead and also make the motion to accept the After Action Report.
The motion is made to accept the After Action Report by Commissioner Daley, and the motion has been seconded by Commissioner Linley. I have Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner Linley, Commissioner Dozier in queue to speak. Commissioner Proctor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've noted that Finding 83 indicates to us that we lost several contracted debris removers and collectors, because there were larger volumes of debris in South Florida, and that there were higher contractor rates in those communities. I saw that Finding 84 suggested that you don't have to have a minimal number of trucks or equipment and all of that, there's no floor qualifying bases to be one of our contractors. And in looking at this, Finding 85 suggested that we could have used additional help with additional equipment capable of debris removal operations, additional staff resources could have been deployed for the debris response. What disappoints me most is that we had a black company that was pushed aside and actually had to file a challenge to participating in the debris removal. And it's sad, but it's true, that when a black company that removes debris, and this report, Finding 85, says that we could have used additional help, whether it was with the city or the county, or do we have a joint collection situation, but the true truth of this matter is that this company would have scored higher than the company from Marianna that had really an exorbitant rate, in my opinion. When a black company can't participate local in picking up sticks off the ground, something really is wrong. And I think that this report needs to, we need to send it back. And if it's not sent back, but Mr. Administrator, I'm asking, that we figure a way that a black company, when we are saying to this commission that additional help could have been used, people we had signed up, went to South Florida, we got outbid it, and we've got people capable, and you don't have to have a minimal number of, there's no minimal number of trucks or debris monitors, then we ought to employ everybody who's able, willing, and ready to work. Anything short of this appears to me to be racism, and it's racism personified, and I'm very disappointed. I'm hopeful that, in what is documented as the nation's most economically segregated community in America, that we can absolutely do better in our future to integrate and to designate. Now, on that federal theme of whether or not the feds require minority participation, or whether or not they didn't, well, the rules came that it was required, that it is a standard, but the city or whomever the contracting agencies were rejected, that this left a bad taste in my mouth, and I think that we can do better, we can be more inclusive, and that issue right there, there's got to be some black people that can pick some sticks up off the ground when we got a situation such as we had. So, that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, who made the motion?
Not you.
I'd like to ask the maker of the motion to accept an augmented addition, that we would review our contracting inclusiveness for our future debris removal efforts, in particular when we have a statewide situation where we pay cheaper than other places.
Commissioner Daley?
Let me be very clear, there was no discrimination whatsoever, hands down, with the selection of the firms. And I want to be very clear as well, Mr. Attorney, are we under any litigation? Are we being sued? Is there a complaint that's been filed?
No, sir.
Mr. Parks, Director Public Works, would you like to address, that was a very serious allegation that Commissioner Proctor just dropped, and I want to make sure that we're very clear, because this is the first time I've heard this, and I'm looking at my colleagues, is this, are you aware of this situation?
No, sir, I'm not, Commissioner.
Okay. I'm good with the motion on the table. We have a process in place for all of our contracts moving forward. I think that we address these issues continuously, not just in emergency response situations, and I think it's important that we need to clear that record immediately, that we did not leave anybody on the table, we did not discard anybody from the selection process. I am not familiar, and again, I'm looking at my colleagues, I'm a little shocked, I am not familiar with anybody, any company, that was turned away during the time of need during the storm response. The motion stands as it is, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Linley?
Well, I agree with you. This is the first I've heard, and I think if accusations of that kind are going to be brought forward in a public meeting, we need to know a whole lot more about that, Commissioner Proctor, and you've gone through line after line on this report, and I don't know if you like the surprise factor or what, but we need to know more if you're going to be serious about this kind of accusation. I have no reason to believe it. Having said that, I feel like I'm kind of at a loss to move forward. I resent that enormously. And I think our county staff is all 555 or however many who worked night and day to do this, without regard to the color of skin of the people working, the people assisting, I just find that so appalling. You have pretty much left a bad taste in my mouth today, too, to be quite honest. We had a really great presentation yesterday with a lot of information coming forward on how we can all be better prepared. I was struck by something that Leslie Chapman Henderson said, which is our human tendency to immediately after a storm say, well, we've had our storm, we won't be hit again for 100 years, optimism, denial, and all the rest take over, and we try to pretend nothing else is going to happen bad because we've had it. But she had a couple of really good suggestions that I liked very much to keep us ever in mind of the things we can be doing all along. Matt, I really missed your not giving us your seatbelt metaphor today that you did yesterday. This guy's got a story for every occasion. Then I did, I would like us to consider, and I don't think it's in the 65 recommendations, getting started on a strengthening your home day, that we can have a community-wide program that will get citizens throughout the community to know about the various things they can do to make their homes more resilient. And I know a lot of you with Sustainable Tallahassee are very interested in the kinds of resilient efforts in terms of roofs being secured to the buildings and all kinds of things, and so we got a really good suggestion yesterday on a strengthening your home day event that the county could have sort of at some time during the year to get just regular folks to know what their homes need and could do to stand in another huge storm. And I also like very much the hashtag Hurricane Strong proposal, the recognition that I think our county could work for to be the first in the nation to really have a very comprehensive program. And here in Florida, where hurricanes are second nature to a lot of us, I think that'd be a great thing for us to work forward, and I don't know if this should be included in the motion to include these two things, or if that can just be sort of drawn into a future report or a future action.
Commissioner?
Chairman, just a reminder that you adopted those as strategic initiatives yesterday.
And so they're in for-
They're good.
Already, okay. I thought so, but I wasn't sure if we needed to second that today. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just to follow up on Commissioner Linley's point, Mr. County Administrator, the Home Expo was included in that strategic initiative yesterday, not just Hurricane, okay, wonderful. I'm glad you brought that up. I appreciate the comments that have been made, and we've got a robust report here. Commissioner Daley, I think I'm going to struggle for a meeting or two not calling you chairman, sorry about that, but I think you're absolute, we don't hide from anything. Every single experience we have is a way to learn, improve our services, and I know I said this immediately after Irma, but just to reiterate it today, the difference between Hurricane Hermine, the coordination, the communication, and Hurricane Irma was felt from day one, even before I think the public really saw a lot of action from our EOC or others. And the moment that the communication started, I was hearing positive comments, and throughout the storm and afterwards. And we have rightly picked up on a few areas, a number of areas. I think what really stood out to me in this report is you're, we're drilling down to the basics. I mean, you're looking at what employees need, the 530 or however many, you know, were working this, if they have to stay overnight at the EOC. I mean, that, even to see that element was really impressive to me, that you're going down to that, those core functional aspects of how we respond to a storm, but also how we keep our people going who are working the entire time. So I really appreciated the deep dive you all did again. We've said it before, we've heard it from others, these reports are being noted around the state, around the country, for the action we've taken in the last couple of years, and we had a great conversation about Hurricane Strong yesterday. So, I just, I cannot express how much I appreciate the efforts that you all have put into this, and I know it's going to make our whole community in our region, as we talked about yesterday, even stronger in the future. And Commissioner Linley, you mentioned Sustainable Tallahassee, that's our next item coming up, is the climate change. We did have a lot of discussion about the connection between resiliency and sustainability, and talking about building codes and other things like that at our retreat yesterday. So, this is a nice pairing of these two items coming back to back. I think they do go hand-in-hand together, and the Home Expo and other things may help that as we move into this approach. So I look for some good conversation to happen there. Just a couple of things that, I think the only two big items that stand out to me that I got on emails were, one about the curfew, which you all have addressed, and I know that was something new and challenging for us, but, Mr. Former Chair, I appreciate your comments, that we're going to trust law enforcement on this and look for a process, and that was really great. The, I'm glad to see that you've included Duke Energy in the list, but some of the other comments I heard, the one public meeting I attended, was about the smaller franchises, the utilities that only have one neighborhood or another. So, I'm just wondering, Mr. County Administrator, if we can include that at least in the information our offices have, if we get calls from constituents where the EOC has, there are these small pockets, the administration may be out of town, out of state, and we had some constituents really struggling to get water or others' things turned back on and some of that. So, that was just one very small thing, really, like I said, getting down to the basics here. The only other two things, and this is coming to Amy, again, I'll echo Commissioner Daley's comments, thank you for sharing your story, and I know we've all heard the stories about the terrible things that happened at nursing homes around the state. I was really excited to see all of the recommendations on special needs, increasing that registry, focused on the, perhaps looking at continuing contracts with Home Health and others. This is something that J.R. Hardy and I had talked about after Hurricane Hermine, he may have taught to some of the rest of you about this as well. There are some people with very extreme, you know, really intense special needs, I'll put it that way, that may need extra care and may be in more danger if they're in a general population, so I'm really glad you're looking at that category. And the last thing on that area, I think, and this comes to some of the comments, which I won't dive back into, I think others have said enough for now, but this report really does reflect our concern about the whole community, no matter income level, or where you live, or what your needs are, or anything like that, or if you're people from outside our community coming in, and that's really great. So, in the area of the homelessness, I am pleased that there's an item looking to work with the Carney Center, and I would just suggest that the continuum of care be added into that item as well. Continuum serves eight counties and is doing a much better job coordinating with agencies throughout the eight counties in our region, but also all of the providers in Leon County. So they may expand those resources for other people who are homeless and CCYS with homeless youth, I mean, there's special populations within that group. So, again, Mr. County Administrator, I'm not sure any of that needs to go into a motion directly, I'm seeing a lot of nods around the room, but as always, you've given us such a great report, we can just build on it a little bit from what we hear from others, and truly appreciate your efforts, and we will be prepared because it is going to happen again. And we will be prepared because it is going to happen again. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. I'm sorry, Commissioner Proctor, follow up, Commissioner Jackson.
I'll defer to Commissioner Jackson, I've spoken a lot.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tony, thank you to all of your staff at Leon County, not just Public Works, but everyone. Mr. Former Chair, thank you for your influential leadership. And I think that our speaker today gave us quite a bit of perspective in that we would probably trade those millions of pounds of debris for the loss of one human life. So thank you for sharing your story with us today, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman. In terms of our disaster public assistance program and its interfacing with the county's debris management plan, and under 4.13 for our debris removal and monitoring, can someone please tell me how, under this section, that this works, and how we're securing our contractors under the section of 4.13?
I'll give it a shot. Alan, I know I've got you on deck and Tony on deck, but let me address sort of a bigger point. I think perhaps Commissioner Proctor, when you were speaking earlier, that we may be inadvertently conflating two issues, which were, one was our debris hauling. As has been said, relative to debris hauling and our debris hauling contracts, we had contracts executed, which is a best practice, in hand, ready to go. When resources became scarce, even under our contracts, we went everywhere to bring in new contracts, including calling anyone who we thought owned a dump truck or a grappling hook or anything to that effect, whether they were FEMA qualified or certified or contractor, not contractor, but we brought an awful lot of resources to bear on that. So nobody who could pick up sticks wasn't touched during that process. The issue, though, that you, I think you were speaking to, was a challenge related to debris monitoring and debris monitoring contract, which is separate. That was separately bid through the city of Tallahassee, and there was some discussion at the time with whether FEMA was requiring minority participation. In our review of the city's RFP, we provided them information that we believed that it was not a requirement. The reason that is important is that any expenses that were made under that FEMA contract, if they were not required and not specified for reimbursement, then we as a community would be out, and those expenses would not be reimbursed under, in this case, the minority contractor. We advised the city of that, the city took that under advisement, took the requirement out of the contract, again, because it would not be reimbursable. That was appealed to a city hearing officer. The hearing officer upheld essentially what was our recommendation, which was that that minority contract participation was not required or reimbursable. And so that's where that stood. It, to my knowledge, did not get appealed further, and I believe that that's where that ended.
Yes, and that was actually tied to Hermine when we did those bids.
Yes. And anything more to add, either Alan or Tony?
No, that was, and as the minister said, those were our consultant services to help for reimbursement, is what that process entailed, and that was actually part of the Hermine, and that's a three-year contract that was still going through an RFP process.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, I recognize we don't, we may not all receive the same information, I'm aware. There's a lot that you receive that I'm unaware of. But the fact that there was no African-American participation in the debris removal, and that there was actually legal challenges to participate, on the issue of whether or not the minority component could be executed, but in this instance, it was relieved, it was waived, it was not. I stand by that night and day. Somewhat surprising that this is not an issue that would, you know, reach your radar, but this is absolutely a dynamic which has occurred, and I believe it warrants further ongoing support. I think that notwithstanding this commission's awareness that Vince at your level, you have to be aware, everybody needs to eat, people trying to stay in business, and I would like for, and I'm encouraging staff to make sure that we're, you know, it's amazing that Alabama's trying to decide a U.S. Senator today, and Florida State has found a football coach in five days, so I read, all the way on the West Coast. But Leon County can't find a black company to pick sticks up off the ground and get them qualified, short of someone waiving whether or not, and debating whether or not there's a federal requirement to include and use a minority provision. But for federal standards, we ought to be able to get a minority businessperson to pick up some sticks after a storm around here. But I understand that you're not aware, you've never heard of these things, but that's okay. I'm encouraging staff, notwithstanding, to, if we can find a football coach to stand on the sideline at FSU, we just, we ought to be able to find some people to pick up sticks after a storm. Mr. Chairman, for your patience, commissioners, thank you.
I have no more commissioners in queue to speak. I have a motion for staff recommendation by Commissioner Daley, second by Commissioner Linley. All those in favor of the motion on the floor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries six to one. Commissioner Proctor in dissent. Mr. Administrator, item number 14.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number 14 is your Animal Annual Sustainability Program status report. You know, commissioners, we bring this to you each year. It highlights our accomplishments of the sustainability programs, activities for the prior year. The report also provides, at your request, an update on the 2008 Climate Action Plan for Leon County operations. And in response to a very recent direction of the board, we've also included in the preliminary analysis of the 100% renewable 2035 initiative. And finally, in collaboration with Sustainable Tallahassee, the agenda item provides recommended next steps for evaluating the development of a community-wide action plan. With that, and before I hand it off to Maggie and Tessa, I'll just note that you have a number of speaker cards, but prior to that, I know Maggie and Tessa are on deck and ready to provide the highlights of the presentation for you. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Good evening. You did make me nervous for a moment when I thought we were presenting on animals. We are not prepared for that.
Thanks for catching that.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you. Nearly two years ago, the Office of Resource Stewardship was reorganized to include our divisions of Parks and Recreation, Facilities Management, Solid Waste, and the Office of Sustainability. It is really inspiring, from my vantage point, to see how seamlessly our sustainability program not only is continuing to gain momentum, but integrating seamlessly into our daily operations. I think that's where we get the long-term wins. I'll be handing it over to Tessa in just a moment to do a review of the annual achievements and a quick look ahead, and then I'll take the slightly longer view of our update of our 2008 action plan. We're fortunate to have such a dynamo at the helm of our sustainability program, and with that, I'll hand it over to Tessa. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm really pleased to share with you today some of the accomplishments that the Office of Sustainability has made in the last year, excuse me, year. As Maggie mentioned, it's been two years nearly since the realignment of the Office of Resource Stewardship, and we have welcomed two new faces to our office and our team. Anya Shalian, the Sustainability Programs Coordinator, moved all the way from Memphis, Tennessee, to join us. In addition, the Sustainability Analyst, Morgan Higman, currently finishing her PhD in Public Administration. So reflective of the agenda item in front of you, this part of the presentation will cover the year in review. Given our short time limit, I'll only be hitting the highlights of the agenda item pretty quickly, and we'll begin with resource conservation. So on August 8th, Leon County launched its Residential Pace Program, which has been quite a long time coming. And the program is gaining quite a bit of excitement and momentum in the community, so much momentum, in fact, that the numbers in your agenda item have actually increased since they published of the item. So the numbers on the screen are the true numbers. So since the launch of the program, nine projects in unincorporated Leon County and six projects in city limits have been completed, and we really look forward to continuing to work with our partners on improving and growing the program moving forward. So on energy conservation, it really continues to be an integral part of our operations. And over the years, the county has conducted innumerable energy efficiency upgrades all around the county and in facilities. And one recent example is actually just downstairs in the clerk's office, which is in this photo here. So all lights were switched to LED, and so obviously each bulb is more efficient, but Facilities was able to replace them with only half the number of light bulbs, given the just amazing quality of LED lights. And something unanticipated actually happened as well. Staff in the clerk's office said that they were starting to feel cold, even though the adjustments on the thermostat hadn't been made. Well, standard light bulbs actually give off heat, and LED light bulbs don't. And so Facilities was able to actually increase the thermometer. So we're going to see increased energy savings from that, which was unanticipated. So we've had the pleasure of working with EMS leadership this year on further driving efficiencies in their fleet of ambulances, exploring new technologies and opportunities to drive efficiency. Some of these initiatives are as simple as plugging in the ambulances at their satellite ports, which help reduce idling time and extend the lifecycle of the ambulances. And although one of sharing with you today is a year in review, we have some exciting things on the horizon that will contribute to resource conservation even further. So building on our existing investment of solar, we're excited to say that the Office of Resource Stewardship will be the next site for the solar array, and we will have future considerations of solar at other facilities. This effort continues to invest in the board's strategic initiatives and the mission of the Office of Resource Stewardship. Next on to Policy and Programs Administration. So reflective of another strategic initiative, we hosted the Sustainable Community Summit this February. And the summit this year actually featured two separate events. The first event was a hospitality industry workshop. We had the pleasure of working with our tourism department on crafting the workshop, and drew over 50 hospitality and sustainability professionals to discuss sustainable tourism. And in fact, we also got a grant to invite six sustainability managers from surrounding cities and counties, including Savannah and Orlando, to attend the workshop, and they have since brought back lessons learned to their own communities. The second, more traditional summit day, was Exploring Our Backyard. It was focused on responsible outdoor recreation and sustaining our environment. It drew over 220 attendees, and for the first time in summit history, we offered post-summit adventures. So we were able to get local guides to take attendees to places in the county they had never been to explore in our own backyard. Our Community Garden Grant Program continues to thrive. To date, we have aided in the establishment of 33 gardens, and eight garden grants were awarded just this year. In addition, staff in Public Works in Planning and Sustainability have worked to amplify this year's Adopt a Tree program. In previous years, only one variety of tree was available for adoption, where this year three varieties are available. This photo here shows Ms. Ruth, which really shows the true legacy of this program. She has participated in the Adopt a Tree program for nearly two decades, and as you can see in the photo, she's standing proudly in front of the trees that she has grown for those years. In addition, as mentioned before, we're working to amplify Arbor Day at Appalachia Regional Park coming in early January. Lastly, on to civic engagement and community partnerships. So something that we're quite well-known for in the community is for our work in outreach and education. And only hitting one of the highlights for this, in an effort to continuously expand our education and outreach and reach more diverse audiences, we were able to translate our very famous recycling graphic into Spanish to reach more diverse audiences. So a year ago, the board voted to reallocate funds from Keep Tallahassee Leon County Beautiful to the Office of Sustainability to spearhead some new and creative litter reduction and beautification initiatives. One of these was aiding in the National Forest Cleanup. Another was a super wonderful event called the Lake Jackson Cleanup. It was the first year we've done this. And we got 60 volunteers out on the water paddling, and they collectively pulled 524 pounds of trash out of the water. We are lucky to have Sustainable Tallahassee and Friends of Lake Jackson here today who partnered in this event. So that was a very quick overview of the last year. There's quite a bit more, but we had short on time today. So with that, I will hand the presentation over to Maggie.
Thank you, Tessa. We keep coffee on tap at the office at all times. As you can see, we're quite busy. I'm going to transition to another element of this evening's agenda, and that's an update on our 2008 Climate Action Plan. This will be, again, for sake of time, a relatively quick update, but reflective of the board's over-decade-long dedication, commitment, and vision, we're quite pleased to provide this brief. So back in 2007, and it's crazy to say that was a decade ago, but the Board of County Commissioners set a commitment to target reduction of 20% of our county's greenhouse gas operation, operations, greenhouse gas emissions. And in order to make sure we were successful, a 77-point action plan was developed and adopted by this commission. One of the key elements of that plan was actually to initiate the Office of Sustainability to oversee the progress and commitment to this goal and ensure our success. I'm very proud to say, nearly 10 years later, we have been successful and continue to build momentum in just 95% completion of those 75 actions, and we have overachieved in our energy reduction from the baseline goal, is just one highlight. Looking at the last 10 years, this organization has invested over $6 million in energy conservation. That has had a very quick payback. We already saved $7 million to date, and dividends going forward every year continuing. Additionally, in the fleet efforts we have, we save 50,000 gallons of fuel every year over what we used to consume in 2007. So these are notable, long-term efforts. But of course, with the team that we have, we didn't stop at the action plan itself. We've had many initiatives, programs, and successes that go well beyond the initial footprint of that 2008 plan. And achieving these certainly was not just our staff alone, or the divisions that helped support us, but key partners like Sustainable Tallahassee, Marpan, The Sharing Tree, and others, and it's partnerships like that that I believe have so well-positioned ourselves for even greater success and on a community-wide level, which I'll get to in just one moment. So taking a breath and looking forward for the, hopefully, the next 10 years of wonderful success in our community. Recently, you may recall, we've had very passionate and dedicated citizens, which is so wonderful to see that this community fully embraces the goals and the vision of a sustainable future. They brought forth a vision of attaining 100% renewable energy by the year 2035. This is certainly an aspirational target, but worthy nonetheless. The challenge with this is that Leon County is not a utility. In order to achieve 100% renewable, our partners, the city of Tallahassee and Talquin, would need to be front and center of that effort. Should we decide to achieve this independently, a target such as this, that would, back of the envelope, cost over $50 million for us to convert our county buildings to 100% renewable at today's cost. Nevertheless, 50 cities throughout the nation have committed to an action-based plan to achieve 100% renewable. They've chosen various timelines to do so. Given our history of action-oriented tangible goals, staff didn't want to just leave it there, that 50 million or else. So really, a very viable alternative, we believe, is the Mayor's for 100. This is 100% renewable pledge of support for the community. 178 mayors throughout the country have signed this pledge. To date, no counties. This is a pledge supported by the Sierra Club. We've reached out to Sierra Club staff, and they wholeheartedly have welcomed that a county could join the forces here, and have committed to rewording their pledge to accommodate counties. If the board so wishes, we would be the first county in the country to join these 178 cities. Again, focused on action-based planning and not stopping short at a very well-intended pledge of support, our team reflected and met with Sustainable Tallahassee, our partners in the community, with a, what we believe is a pretty novel idea, and essentially, it would be to take the top 10 contributors to energy consumption in our community, as defined by Sustainable Tallahassee in their scorecard, and working with those entities in a partnership similar to the Paris Climate uh, with those entities in a partnership, um, similar to, um, the Paris Climate Accord, which is, um, very timely as, um, the, um, compact is meeting, uh, today, I believe, in Fiji as we speak. Um, but with these 10, uh, partners, the vision would be to, for each of us to commit to our slice of the pie that we can impact with our operations and our resources at hand, and collectively and holistically, um, achieve a greenhouse gas and climate reduction for the community as a whole. Um, Sustainable Tallahassee would certainly be a key partner in this, and I appreciate the support and, uh, presence of, uh, the President and other leadership here this evening. Um, with your support and interest this evening, our next steps would be to go arm-in-arm with Sustainable Tallahassee to the remaining nine, uh, top 10, as we're referencing, to share the vision, uh, express, um, the, the excitement and perhaps see their level of interest, depending on the feedback and the next steps. We, uh, as staff, would be happy to come back to you, uh, and present the, the vision of the next steps, ideally in the next year, to, again, tangibly make progress in a community-wide collaborative approach. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Vince, and we appreciate your time.
Mr. Chairman, we have 10 speaker cards. If you'd like me to proceed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, our first speaker is Grant Gelhart.
Grant, name and address for the record, please, sir.
I was hoping to follow everybody else and say I agree. But, um, I'll start off with, say, I agree with what everybody else is gonna say. Um, my name's Grant Gelhart. I live at 1906 Giuliani. Um, I also happen to be a member of the Sierra Club. So, um, first of all, I came here in support of a more, more robust sustainable planning and pro, planning process, uh, for, uh, Sustainable Tallahassee or Sustainable Leon County. Also, the Climate Action Plan, I think that is critical. Um, carbon, uh, carbon dioxide increase has, uh, resulted in sea level rise throughout the state. We are lucky that we don't have that to address, but, you know, my hometown, uh, in South Florida is trying to address those type of issues. So I think, uh, as being the capital of Tallahassee, uh, capital county, that we are obligated to, uh, address climate change and, uh, sustainability. Um, I wish, uh, City of Tallahassee had a sustainability coordinator. We are trying to work with them to get that done. I do, uh, thank you folks, uh, in the county for having it. Um, so with that, um, I would like for you to move forward with this, uh, proposal, and if you have any questions, you know, say yeah.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Bob Henderson.
Mr. Henderson, how you doing, sir, Commissioner? Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Bob Henderson, 497 Stonehouse Road, and I'm President of Sustainable Tallahassee. To begin with, I'd like to thank the Commission and the staff for the partnership that we have, uh, had over the last few years in doing a lot of things that, uh, support the There are a lot of people here that are in support of sustainability, but let me just ask, and some of these may come up here to speak, but would the people who are board members or committee members of Sustainable Tallahassee, please raise your hand, show your support for these activities. Sustainable Tallahassee is prepared to work with the county staff in, uh, promoting the, uh, plans that you approve and want to move forward on. I would like to also suggest that we tend to use sustainability and climate interchangeably. And of course, as the President of Sustainable Tallahassee, I would like it to be sustainability. And Sustainable Tallahassee stands on the stool with three legs. Environmental stewardship, community cohesiveness, and economic vitality. And if any one of those legs is, uh, shorter than the rest, the stool tends to tip over. And so I'd like us to embrace all of these issues as we move forward in making plans for our community. I agree that what we're doing with, uh, energy is important, but there are other aspects of our society that are weak or we have problems, um, that we should, should be addressing as well. So sustainability ought to embrace all the, these three, uh, legs of the stool. And I'd encourage you, as you, um, move forward with this, to, uh, embrace all those issues as well. And we'd be prepared to work with the Commission and the staff in doing things with all three legs. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Richard Hopkins.
Name and address for the record, please, sir.
I'm Richard Hopkins. I live at 1209 Camellia Drive in Tallahassee. I spent 35 years as an epidemiologist in public health organizations, and one way of looking at that is that I spent 35 years trying to advocate, well, not just trying to, advocating for database decision-making wherever possible. So I'm, I came to you all a month ago, um, and I'm just, mostly I'm gonna say again what I said then, which is that we do have posted on the Sustainable Tallahassee website the CO2 scorecard for Leon County, uh, which I've drawn to your attention before, and the URL is in the document, so you can go read it at your leisure. There's a new version in preparation. The one that's posted now will be replaced in the next week or two. It's not substantially different, but it's brought up through 2016. There are two things that I wanna comment about specifically. If we look at how we produce carbon dioxide in Leon County, 44% of the CO2 production is from mobile sources. That's cars, trucks, buses, construction equipment, and so on. So any comprehensive solution to, um, making our energy future, our renewable energy future, has to address mobile sources as well as stationary sources like buildings, houses, schools, office buildings, and so on. The implications of that, um, are fairly broad, and they, they will lead us probably into discussions about the, um, the county's, um, comprehensive plan, the, the mobility and, um, plant, and, uh, development parts of that. They'll lead us into discussions about economic development. With an 18-year timeframe, um, we don't have a lot of extra time, but we do have the time to do it right, I think, and to really address the mobile as well as the stationary sources. The other thing I wanted to comment on briefly, uh, staff commented that the CO2 scorecard doesn't address greenhouse gases other than carbon dioxide. There was a comprehensive look at all greenhouse gases for the state of Florida carried out by the State Department of Environmental Protection in 2008. They estimated that 8% of the greenhouse gas production in Florida is not CO2, so over 90% of it is CO2. The non-CO2 part is in roughly equal parts methane, nitrogen, and sulfur oxides, and, uh, fluor, fluoroclorocarbons, the, the analogs of Freon, the coolants. The coolants are, are covered by international treaties. The methane issue is being largely taken care of by the, here locally, by the closure of the landfill. And as we transition away from carbon-based fuels, we will also stop making nitrogen oxides and sulfur oxides. I think we're right to focus on carbon dioxide. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Our next speaker is Bart Bibler.
All right, name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, my name's Bart Bibler. I live at 3673 Mossy Creek Lane here in Tallahassee. Uh, I'm a concerned citizen. I'm a member of the Sustainable Tallahassee Renewable Energy Advocacy Committee, and I'm also a sales engineer at Independent Green Technologies, which is a local solar, uh, contractor company here in Tallahassee. Um, I am sure that you understand that this community renewable energy planning will not be easy, especially with regard to the City of Tallahassee utilities. The interim city manager, Reese Goad, has stated that it is impossible to achieve 100% renewable by 2035. The city has just invested hundreds of millions of dollars in more natural gas infrastructure. Their policies are supportive of utility-owned solar, but they're not supportive of rooftop solar or local solar contractors. Let me give you a couple of examples. They're not supportive of commercial-scale solar projects. My company recently completed 128-kilowatt solar project on a hotel, uh, served by Duke Energy in Jefferson County near Lloyd. Because the city will not honor net metering above 100 kilowatt, this project would not be economically viable in the City of Tallahassee. Another example, there was no local contractor involvement in the city's solar farm project, despite a great team of local contractors that provided proposals and held meetings with the city's solar farm contractors. The City of Tallahas, Tallahassee utility revenues are substantial component of the city's general revenues, maybe even the majority, and they'll need to be replaced with other, other revenues, or the rate structures need to be revised to encourage energy efficiency and rooftop and commercial solar. Maybe the rates of FSU, FAMU, and state office buildings should be raised. Currently, these three big electric consumers have little incentive to save energy or invest in renewable energy with the low rates that they enjoy. Based on the likelihood of numerous contentious issues, I believe that we will need consultants with expertise in both energy planning and in community facilitation to assist with development of our plan. And I support the next steps that are recommended by your staff and look forward to participating.
Thanks, sir. Next speaker?
Next up is Amy Datz.
Amy, name and address for the record again, please, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please, again.
Oh, okay. Uh, my name is Amy Datz. I live at, uh, 1130 Crestview Avenue in Tallahassee. Uh, I am, uh, a member of the Environmental Caucus of Florida. I'm on the Science Advisory Board for Leon County, but I am not representing them at the moment. Uh, but I, hopefully, they will pick up this issue. I'm also a member of the Physicians for Social Responsibility and a Nobel Prize-winning organization. I want to thank you for considering this issue. Um, it takes courage, and I appreciate that. I wanted you to know that Albania, I don't even know where Albania is, but Albania, uh, has just banned fracking. And, uh, the World Bank has just, uh, said that they would no longer give any loans for, um, oil and gas exploration. I bring this up because, uh, the city is on, uh, using mostly gas. This get, 95%, I believe, 95% of that gas is fracked gas. So we wanna get away from it. That's important, to get away from this, this situation. It says in your report on page, uh, 688 of 1,112, or page 437, that you had a cost savings of $7 million for your, uh, current practices. Let's make it, let's, let's boost that up. Let's make it higher. Let's do a better job and, and save even more. Uh, you said, one of the speakers said that you saved 50,000 gallons of fuel. Let's boost that. Let's save even more. Uh, so the city, someone also mentioned the City of Tallahassee and Talquin are the electrical providers. Uh, the city, the county is a major, um, customer. Customers are always right, and, uh, we should be able to speak to them and get them on our side. So I thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Be well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker?
Anthony Gaudio. Sorry? Yes, you are. Thank you. Brian Lee.
Brian, name and address for the record, please, sir.
Hi, I'm, uh, Brian Lee. I live at 1203 Buckingham Drive. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, uh, and thank you for the opportunity to speak here today on behalf of Rethink Energy Florida. Rethink Energy Florida supports options 1 through 4, recommended by county staff and included, uh, within this meeting's agenda, item number 14. We'd like the county to work with the Sierra Club and Rethink Energy Florida and our coalition partners to create and implement a plan that would allow Leon County to effectively work towards a goal in line with the Mayors for 100% Clean Energy endorsement. We believe that it is important to not just pass a resolution, but to devise and implement a realistic, yet visionary, plan that would examine the obstacles and conditions as well as recommended solutions for how the county can transition to 100% renewable energy by 2035. We believe that it's important to commission a plan that takes obstacles, conditions, and future developments as soon as we can, rather than debating over a date. Some commissioners may be hesitant to include the 2035 date, but we believe it's very important to have and include a goal and to begin taking action to achieve it. We can assume that renewable technology will change and become more affordable over the years, uh, and that has gone according to, um, rates that, uh, that are measurable, uh, including batteries for solar and the availability, availability of wind power in Leon County. While wind power is not really feasible now here, it may become a viable alternative to clearing a lot for, of land for solar farms as technology develops. Uh, the Climate Action Plan led by Sustainable Tallahassee can also implement various measures that would further facilitate the transition to clean energy, like incentivizing residents and businesses to adopt more energy-efficient building codes. And thank you very much for your time, Mr. Chair and members of the County Commission.
Thanks, sir. Next speaker?
John Hendrick, to be followed by our final speaker, Pepper Uchino.
Uh, name and, name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm John Hendrick at 1551 Cristobal Drive, number one. Um, here as Chair of the Leon County Democratic Environmental Caucus and authorized also to speak on behalf of the Democratic Party, though this is a community effort by everyone in this community. We're here in support of not only the options you've got on the table there, but as Mr. Lee also indicated from Rethink, we think it's be, and we're supportive of what everyone's been generally saying here, we think it is important to have a goal. Now, you had an option five on your, in your recommendations that you did not, that your staff wasn't recommending. Now, whether you adopt option five, or you put a date of 2035 in, is the goal you're shooting at. Basically, we're concerned, we would like you all to be, at least as we start forward with all this, on this, in sync kind of with the city in terms of going after the same ultimate goal. How we all get there, we obviously gotta work on as we go along. It is important to have a plan, and I'm glad that we're working on plans. But I think we do need to put a goal on, at least for now, it's, and that's what the city did too, in terms of where we're proceeding towards. So whether you adopt option five, whether you adopt a goal of 2035s as what we're aiming at for the 100% renewable energy by that, in terms of what we're trying to do for the entire community-wide effort, we can be supportive of either of those, just as long as that's where we mutually are headed in this. So I wanna thank you all very much for all the work you've done in the past on this. It's obvious that you've done a great deal of work on all these areas, and we want to see the county continue to exhibit the leadership that you all have in the past. So thank you all very much for your time today.
Thanks, sir. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Pepper Uchino, 905 Waverly Road, uh, representing Resiliency Florida at 201 West Park Avenue, Suite 100, here in Tallahassee. I'm the Executive Director of Resiliency Florida, um, but I'm not really here to speak to that. Uh, I'm just here in support of everything the county is doing and the staff recommendations. My wife and I moved up here in 2007, shortly, you know, as the Climate Action Plan was being put together, and, uh, our plan was to stay here for two to, two to three years, maximum. Uh, probably like a lot of people, uh, we did, we didn't plan on staying here in, in Leon County. And then we came to Leon County, we came to the City of Tallahassee, and we thought, wow, this is a really great place. This is, this is a place where we could, we could really raise our family. This is a place that shares our values. And it's, it's quite amazing to see how innovative this county is. Um, when I came to Commissioner Daley- When I came to Commissioner Daley to speak about Resiliency Florida, which we were forming last year, which is a public-private partnership to try to get the legislature and Washington, DC to think more about funding and policies and whatnot to mitigate and adapt for climate change and sea level rise and severe weather events, I had this whole sales pitch ready to go for Commissioner Daley. You know, here we go. And I said, this is what I'm trying to do. He goes, great, how can we help? That was it. That was all I had to do, and that speaks to how progressive and how innovative this county is. When I saw one of the options that Maggie had presented, which was the kind of modeling a local Paris Climate Accord, I mean, that's really on the forefront of planning in the United States. And that's not something that you, if you were to implement something like that, that you would be the forerunners. This is not something that had or has happened in any other place in the United States. Some have signed on to the Paris Accord, but nobody has done their own thing, modeled after that for the local, the local community. So I'm just here to support the efforts of staff, the efforts of the county commission to thank you and to say I'm really just proud to be a Leon County citizen. So thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Any more speakers, Mr. Administrator?
That concludes our speakers, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Daley.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I certainly appreciate it. First of all, I'll go ahead and make the motion for options 1, 2, 3, and 4, with comments afterwards.
Motion made by Commissioner Daley for options 1 through 4. Seconded by the Vice Chair. Commissioner Daley, have the floor.
Excellent. I appreciate it. You know what? I've served on this commission for 11 years, and the past couple of weeks, I've been really thinking about what we're doing in conservation. We're not doing enough. I think we need to be bolder. I really do. And by the way, Commissioner Henderson, it's good to see you back in chambers, former county commissioner. Thank you for coming. I do think we need to be bold. I do. I don't want to include in the motion right now the 2035 date, but I want us to target the 2035 date. Look, here's the deal. Tessa, Maggie, y'all said it would cost $50 million to go out there and become completely independent, all right? That's the goal, and we've got 17 years to do it, all right? Technically, 2018, we got till 2035. I want to see that plan. I want us to beef up our Climate Action Plan, and the truth is, there is, there is no reason why every square inch of every county facility shouldn't have solar on top, and if it's just money, let's put the plan together and let's see how we can move forward. It's just time to plant the flag and say, we're going to do this. Either we believe in it, and we're going to move forward, and we're going to put a plan in place, whether it's a 10-year, 20-year, 30-year plan or not. And I think that we should work towards that. I really do. I think that we should sit down and go, if we're really going to do this, all right, let's put the plan together. There's other things. I would love, I know that we've got the EV stations going up at, what, 203? County facilities, there's no reason why we shouldn't have electric vehicle charging stations at every county facility. I mean, if we really want to support the community in making the switch and going to electric vehicles, the infrastructure is going to have to be put in place, okay? We can start. Every branch library, the downtown library, the courthouse, all of our facilities should have electric vehicle charging stations. And I would even press staff to go so far as to see what is the cost associated with the independent charging stations that are solar, that aren't even tied into the grid system, you know? Let's see if we can make this happen, and let's put the plan together. We've got a great start, and we're taking even bolder steps tonight. I'd love to see us move forward. You know, colleagues, at the last meeting, I brought up we need to readdress putting solar out at the Appalachia facility. The truth is, and I had this conversation with Pepper not too long ago, and I appreciate you coming, we've got all this empty, all this real estate on top of every county facility that we are not maximizing. We're not, and if it's just a money issue, well, that's priorities, and we should sit down and figure out how to do it. But if we can put solar on top, we sit in our offices, we look outside that ledge. There should be solar on that ledge. There's no doubt about it. There's no reason why we should not be maximizing solar energy in all of the county facilities. And I think that we should definitely be one of the leaders in the state of Florida with the aggressive goal of 2035, going completely alternative, solar energy, and putting a true plan together. Look, the more energy efficiency we put in place, the more of our cost savings. So that $50 million is going to come down, and it'll probably come down dramatically over the next decade as technology catches up and as our energy savings catch up as well. I really do think that it's a realistic goal. The final thing is, is that I would like us, and I would challenge staff, to throw out the challenge to the academic community. We have Florida State, we have FAMU, we have TCC. When we talk about wind energy, you know, we should contact the engineering school and challenge those students down there. You know what? If you come up with a cool idea, we'll try it. We've got rooftop space. If you can come up with a wind energy generator through wind power, we'll try it. We've got the real estate to do it. We should do more to connect with the academic community. You've got these talented students that are coming up with these great ideas, and we can connect the dots between, and Commissioner Dozier, we talk about entrepreneurship all the time, we talk about working with the university community. Hey, let's be bold. Let's partner up. Finally, I want to see Resilience Florida at the table as well, moving forward as we develop our plans. Like to remind my colleagues, we're one of the founding members of this organization. We have the executive director right here in our community as well, and you're a great resource. As we're moving forward, let's make sure that all the right partners at the table as well. But we made the motion for options 1 through 4, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Commissioner Lilly.
You know, I'm going to be brief because I know we have another big item coming up right quickly. I haven't really been clinging to the 2035 date, and Bart and I have talked about that a lot, but I'm really thrilled that we're trying to get this out of the confines of county property and county buildings and county equipment and on into the broader community. So I think this is important for our whole community to know that here tonight, we are saying, no, we want to go, we want to go well beyond what the county's doing. And Bart was, you know, very diplomatically said, yeah, it's all well and good what you all do in-house, but we need to get in a broader scheme of things. So I'm very excited about this. I'm really thrilled. I think we've made a lot of progress pretty fast in just coming to the realization that we need to, we need to get on our market set, go, and that's happening tonight. So I'm very excited about all four options and wholeheartedly support that. So thank you all for being here tonight. I know you've got a lot more work to do out there, but we sure appreciate your being here. We couldn't do it alone by any means. Thank you.
Commissioner Dozier, then Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I do know we're running close to 5. This has been a robust meeting for our last before the Christmas break, but I do have to take a moment to reflect on two things. This is Sustainable Tallahassee's 10th anniversary. Thank you all for being here. There was, I think, a couple hundred people at the celebration in November, and this was part of the original mission, was to focus on this. And as Bob, Commissioner Henderson, said, the triple bottom line. This is essential. We have never lost that focus, and I think you're right, Commissioner Daley and others, that this is pervasive in what we do in the county as well. Nine years after we established a plan, I was not on the commission that time, might have been pushing from the other side a little bit. This is exceptional. I am proud of the county because we focused on our own house first, and I think we got to acknowledge also that Maggie Terry was one of the first sustainability coordinators in the community. FSU has one, there's many others now. And Abina, I really hope I get your last name. She's still here? Yes, you are still here. The Chief Resiliency Officer at the city of Tallahassee. I always get your last name wrong. Forgive me, but I'm really glad you're here tonight. I know there's some elements in here about the city pulling back in the office, and I'm glad to see they're restructuring. So this is, this is pretty essential for us, but we have been focused on this plan for a long time. We got our own house in order, but it's important to highlight that we've spent $6 million to save $7 million. So this is a return on that investment that will keep going for the citizens of Leon County, but it does take some effort and some money to invest in that. So Commissioner Daley, I would welcome, and I think the staff is analyzing additional solar. I would also love, and I think we have seen this on some of our facilities, looking at reflective roofs, things like that. I like the, I like the idea of the LED lights being so much cooler, and I can't take just a moment. I love the recycling being translated into Spanish, reminded me of Tessa giving an interview in Spanish during Irma, and that was fantastic. We saw that recently. So it's good to reach out to our whole community. So I am thrilled about this, appreciate everything the Office of Sustainability has done over the years, and I think it has had a great impact, even in the community with the gardens and everything, but this is the right time to move forward with the plan. Resiliency Florida, other organizations, I mean, this is it. And as we said before, resiliency and sustainability, we're talking about both. So I am excited to move it forward. I like option 4. Appreciate your comments, John. I'm not attached to option 5. I don't, I think we need to look at this, and I like the Sierra Club's initiative to look as a county option. This was a mayor's initiative. This should be something rolled out statewide, so I really am excited about that conversation that's going forward. And I think just a couple of things to highlight. I, I look forward to the plan coming back about how we're going to develop this community climate plan. I love the idea of the Paris Climate Accords. I think that was great to highlight, that this is really cutting-edge to do something and work with everyone where they are. FAMU, FSU, a lot of the big players have already, TMH have already done a lot. We need to assess that and help push others forward. But I'd also love to see in that report when it comes back, ways to engage the broader community as a part of our citizen engagement series, as a part of Village Square. How do we have a coalition building on this, using Sustainable Tallahassee as a great vehicle that's already been built to harness some of those other things, and really drilling down into some areas like the building code and comp plan, those types of things that we've talked about. So leaving that, the one thing that I really want to push on right now, and, you know, I'm going to look at you a little bit to carry this back to the city, recycling rates, utility, all these types of things, we will not make forward momentum on this without the city being a partner with us. And that's why I'm excited for you to be here, but on recycling, we've got a 2020 deadline to hit 75%. We have done exceptionally well in reducing construction demolition debris, everything else. If we don't get to businesses within the city limits and apartment complexes, which have not been included in the city's recycling plan, we will, I don't believe we're going to hit that 75% benchmark. So very specifically, I would love staff, and I know you're already engaged in that conversation, to really, let's push our partners at the city. We've got the same waste collection company working for both city and county. We need to push them to help us get to 75% as a community-wide goal. So just wanted to lean into that part a little bit, but I am thrilled about this. I appreciate all the partners who have worked so hard on this, and we're going to make a huge impact and hopefully be a leader, particularly for North Florida. Some of our South Florida counties have gotten out there, but we can be a leader for North Florida in a lot of ways. So thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Just to be a heads up here, what I'm thinking here, I'm going to push through to about 5:30. At that moment, I'll probably make a decision about, you know, break at that moment, but I would like for us to get through the general, the general business and maybe even try to get through the rest of the agenda before we take break, but I'm going to push through to about 5:30. I have Commissioner Proctor and Commissioner Lindley in queue to speak. Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Daley, in the years that he's been here, it has impressed me that his is usually not a high emotional argument. And sitting by him today, I can actually feel his passion for what he's saying, his convictions about it, and I'm persuaded by the energy that I feel that he's emitting as we talk about energy. But most of all, I'm captured by both, not only his heart, but his head as well, and I'm persuaded to believe that ours should be a aggressive and bold move in this area. I think that aggressive includes the county looking at becoming an investor as well as a serious financial stakeholder in facilitating solar. Some years ago, when the city of Tallahassee opted to look into owning this, a utility company, who knew that it would generate billions of dollars and be a primary source of income to that government? Ours is a sunshine state by name, a moniker, sunshine state, and yet we're in a state where the word global warming and stuff like that is politically not trending. It doesn't make sense. So I think that Commissioner Daley, other commissioners, that ownership are getting out front. I'm impressed by what Mr. Bibler has shared. Mr. Bibler, in particular, in his closing comments, have given us some great ideas. Mr. Hopkins has given us some great points. This is excellent. Commissioner Lindley, in 1994, I wrote, I wrote about energy. I wrote about these kinds of things and have an article framed in my office, and I don't know how long ago that was, but in 1994, published an article along these lines. And in that article, Commissioner Lightsey, I made the quest, request for a citizens' utility board, and it's interesting how, if we be, to be bold and imaginative and futuristic, that we're saying things, but it's not clear. Will we be under the governance, citizens whose expertise in an area that, in particular, if you look at Mr. Hopkins' report, you could tell that he's just so much information, and he's having to, he had to dumb down this report because I was sitting here, and I appreciate that, Mr. Hopkins, to slow it down, that I might possibly, you know, understand a little inkling of something. But we have brilliant people in the 12th most educated American city, and we ought to, Commissioner Daley, be bold and allow the genius that gentleman said he moved here and didn't want to leave. I know why. It's hard to leave when you're surrounded by high-energy, cognitive, well-developed people, and I think that we should take the reins off and in whatever ways this supports and expedites our, including a model by which energy will be fashioned, and that includes the citizens' review and maybe new ownership ideas of deregulating a government, I mean, or including voices of the community, such as very, very bright people in these reports and your ideas. So I concur, support Commissioner Daley. Commissioners, let's be bold, is my recommendation. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. I have no more Commissioners in queue to speak. I have a motion on the floor for staff recommendation by Commissioner Daley. That motion was seconded by the Vice Chair. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, indicate by saying aye. Are any opposed? Motion carries without objection. Mr. Administrator, we're going to move on to number 15.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This item seeks board authorization to issue an RFP for consulting services to complete the comprehensive wastewater treatment facilities plan funded by the Blueprint 2000 Sales Tax Extension. The plan will provide recommended technologies, financing, management strategies, and assessment of regulatory measures related to preferred sewage treatment disposal systems in the unincorporated area of the county. Commissioners, as you can see from the analysis before you, we've had extensive feedback along the way and have been guided by much citizen participation, which we greatly appreciate. As you all know, we continue to get even more in as of very late. The options before you reflect much of the feedback that we've received, should the board wish to discuss that which may not be included in the item in terms of recommendations, that sort of thing, we're certainly prepared to answer any questions you have, or should the board wish to pause and have those further analyzed and brought back to you at a future meeting, we can certainly accommodate that as well. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and Teresa Hiker is on deck to do just that.
As I understand it, Commissioners, we have about eight speakers. Mr. Administrator, let's start those speakers. After those speakers, I have Commissioner Proctor in queue to speak. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First speaker is Grant Gilhart.
I'll turn in my cards later. Again, this is Grant Gelhart. I live at 1906 Chulini. I'm also with Florida Sierra Club. I'm on the Executive Committee. And I want to talk about water quality protection. Many of you have been here in Tallahassee as long as I have. I remember going down to Wakulla Springs. I remember the glass-bottom boat ride. It's gone. Water quality in Tallahassee and Leon County was quite high years ago. I mean, we did have some problems, but it's gotten worse. A couple of years ago, there was algae in the springs, down at Wakulla Springs. There was algae in the sinkholes. There was hydrola in the rivers. Now, we've addressed some of that, and we've taken some great steps. But we hope Tallahassee and Leon County will continue to grow. We know Tallahassee and Leon County will continue to grow. I've been here since the 70s, when downtown was basically downtown, right here, and there was no Klarn. Okay? We are out in Klarn. We're out in Southwood. We're building in new developments around here. So, we really need to address this issue, especially in the area of the Wakulla Springs Spring Shed and Woodville area. And I think what we've done, a lot of studies, we need to implement a plan. And thank you for moving forward, and I recommend you moving forward and doing an RFP, and let's get a plan out there, and let's start addressing some of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Anthony Gaudio.
Anthony Gaudio, 2335 Grassroots Way. I am a retired master septic tank contractor and a retired underground utility contractor for the state of Florida. I currently serve on the Department of Environmental Protection Advisory Committee overseeing the basin management action plan, overseeing the nutrient reduction in Wakulla Springs. I understand, Vince, assuming I was going to speak about sustainability because my long-term involvement with Sustainable Tallahassee, but this too is a sustainability issue, protecting our springs and, more importantly, our aquifer. Teresa Heikler from the county gave a presentation at the BMAP Committee meeting last month, and she got substantial feedback from the members and the audience who have substantial understanding of these issues and gave good feedback. And I really appreciate that the county staff and with, under Teresa's leadership, took those into advisement and made significant changes to that original draft RFP. It's still not perfect. I concur with the written comments that you received from Bob Dial and Pam Hall that fine-tuned this much better document. The issues that we need to focus on in the future to maintain the sustainability of our aquifer and springs are reduction, reduction of nutrients. And it's going to be on your responsibility and your jurisdiction to ensure that we do that. We can extend sewer so far, but we're also going to have to upgrade septic tanks. We have some mechanisms for financing extension of sewer. We do not currently have mechanisms for upgrading existing septic tanks, so it's not a burden on the individual homeowners. You're going to be responsible for coming up with such a plan. I would advise you to have the staff incorporate this high level of expertise in the community in moving forward with this RFP so that we get the highest-quality plan. Remember, this is an engineering plan. It's not a study. We've already done all the studying we need. So, thank you, and thank you for listening to us.
Next speaker is Debbie Lightsey.
If my cohort Pam Hall can go first, we have tried to sequence our comments.
Next speaker is Pam Hall.
Pam Hall, name and address.
We'll see how well this works. Pamela Hall, 5051 Quail Valley Road. This is, thank you very much for listening to us. You know, I've been talking about this for years. We are so close, I can taste it. I do have two issues, and the first is about the role of the Master Water and Sewer Plan on sewered target areas. There's 14 of them. You guys designated these years ago, when the only tools you had to address both issues with growth and with human health issues and nitrogen reduction were sewer. I'm, I'm not quite clear whether the scope of services says that these things are completely taken off the table, ignore them, we're going to sewer them. Or what I think is the appropriate thing is that they be included and they be reanalyzed in the light of our knowledge of this new technology, that the technology can exist at many different levels, that it can be onsite cluster and sewer, that the cost-effectiveness might be quite different, that we now know that there's difference in aquifer vulnerability above and below the SCARP. So, the COT sewer is a really high level of treatment. It's very important, but maybe it's like not worth the bang for the buck because you go further north. I don't know the answers to these. This is why we hire someone to analyze it and give us those answers. But if you ignore those 14 areas and the rest of the urban services area, then you're not asking about alternatives to sewer. So, both need to be included. I also think that Master Water and Sewer Plan has really good estimates for demand in the future. Again, I got a little confused with some of the language about future land use. I don't know if you noticed in my calculation, but if we use future land use as demand, it would give us 340,000 people in the unincorporated area. I don't think that's happening in the next 10 or 20 years. So, that Master Water and Sewer Plan does a lot for us, and it was at your direction that that analysis be done. It does all the sewer analysis. It gives you a good idea for demand inside the USA and in Woodville, and it covers that part, and it needs to be relooked at. The other thing that's important in this scope is it's not just about dollars per kilogram. There are also other considerations that aren't quantifiable, and those need to be taken into account. You will probably discover that many of these areas will remain on sewer, but to not ask that question again, I think is a failure at this point. And to one of Anthony's points, the other thing that's asked to be considered is owner participation rates. Owner participation rates are a function of when you make people do something about their septic tank, when you supply an option to them, which might just be upgrade onsite, and who pays for it. So, the next stage is going to be to ask about financing. Please ask the staff to make more explicit recommendations to the consultants, that they explore these possibilities, these combinations, so you guys will have information for the next step, and that should be a minimum of what a consultant can do for you. Use this to really tell you what you need to know to ask the next and more difficult questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Administrator.
She's on her way.
Name and address.
Debbie Lightsey, 2340 Cypress Cove Drive, Tallahassee. We've come so far on this, and we're almost there, but I hope you will not approve it as is tonight because I think there are really some significant issues that are being addressed here and in the written comments. So, I hope you will take those into account. It's really hard to believe that this is 2017, and I'm still here talking about my favorite topic, sewage. I need a more glamorous life than this. But I'm happy we're following sustainability, because I have been saying for years that you cannot label yourself a sustainable community unless you have a comprehensive wastewater treatment and disposal plan. And I see Kristen smiling and Mary Ann because they've heard me say that. We are so close to getting it really right, and I thank you for all that. Two pieces of clarification. This is supposed to be a comprehensive plan countywide, and yet the language is unclear as to whether this plan is going to cover the entire unincorporated area, excuse me, area of Leon County. It really needs to, and we've been going on that assumption, but on a closer reading of the RFP language tonight, it is unclear. So, please make this countywide, comprehensive, and alternatives to sewer. And to do that, you need to include those areas that are currently listed as being covered by central sewer plans from the city and county master sewer plan. There's 14 areas, I think. All these things need to be thrown back in the hopper. You're not going to pay more or less for this study if you leave those areas out. We've got new technology, as Pam says. The decision to sewer some of these areas was made 20 years ago when you didn't have alternatives. So, we're hoping you're going to make this countywide and really comprehensive. A couple of, couple of reasons to put those areas in. If you have the consultant do these areas and the entire unincorporated area, your citizens will know that the treatment systems all will have been tested against each other, and the best, most up-to-date nitrate removal technology for existing and future development in their specific area is what is going to be recommended. And it's not a one-size-fits-all. The second is cost-effectiveness. I'll make it quick. If you have a recent independent professional study, and you go out to talk to your citizens about how you're going to have to retrofit to get this nitrate out of the sewage, you will have a professional, independent plan to base that on. So, you'll get the best technology, but you'll get current cost elements, and this is going to be very expensive. Many of these areas are going to be resistant to city central sewer. If you have this consultant plan to back you, you will have political backing, financial backing, and you will have the right environmental answer. So, please include all the areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lightsey. Mr. Administrator?
Our next speaker is Alan Niderroda.
Name and address for the record, please.
I did it. I applaud you. Good evening, Commissioners. I am Alan Niderroda, 6000 Millland in Cove. I'm, and many of you might recognize me, I'm president of the Friends of Lake Jackson, and I've often been here to talk about those issues. So, I'm actually here today as a private citizen, a concerned citizen, a citizen with 40 years' background in environmental consulting. I've written and responded to an awful lot of RFPs, and I really want to express my appreciation to the county staff for taking our comments seriously, realizing that many of our citizens did put a fair amount of work into reading the documents, puzzling out what we're trying to do, and trying to come up with helpful recommendations. And I think it worked out very, very well. But as, as was pointed out by, I think, Anthony, I don't think we're quite there yet. We're very close, and we're getting closer. I'd advise that we don't put it out as it is now, but we take into account the comments that Ms. Lightsey and Ms. Hall just went over. I will go over them in detail. I will make, I had my own comments, which were parallel to what Ms. Lightsey said in terms of changing some of the language in a minor way to further emphasize that this is a countywide study. Obviously, it's going to be emphasizing the karst plain and the effect on Wakulla Springs, but we need to consider the effect of these nutrients and reduction of these nutrients on all of the surface water bodies throughout the county. And there's several that are, that are suffering from excess nutrients now, and there's an interfeed between these. One of the final things I think I'll mention here occurred to me as Anthony was speaking, and that is that you do have some very interested people here, people that have some serious technical background, and I think it's a real resource. It may be worth looking at structuring the request for proposals to include phased presentations of intermediate results by the consultants that can be reviewed by interested citizens and where we can continue to have positive input into the process of forming the conclusions of this report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Bart Bibler.
All right. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Again, Bart Bibler at 3673 Mossy Creek Lane in Tallahassee. I have some different hats to wear, I guess, for this agenda item. First of all, I'm an environmental engineer, and I've supervised the state's septic tank program and also the state's surface water improvement and management program. I'm on the board of the Wakulla Springs Alliance and also the Executive Committee of the Florida Springs Council, and serve as the chairman of their Strategic Advocacy Committee. I want to applaud you for accelerating this project and for moving forward with this RFP. Certainly, there have been some suggestions of some improvements, but regardless, I want to applaud that you've accelerated the whole project and are moving quickly, listening to the comments, making great improvements in the RFP with just a few to go. This is a very important commitment to the other partners in the Wakulla Springs protection area, including the City of Tallahassee and to Wakulla County. This comprehensive and objective approach on determining the wastewater options and priorities for septic tank remediation is a model for other Florida Springs with septic tank nitrogen problems. This approach and RFP is being shared and encouraged with the Florida Springs Council and with other statewide springs protection advocates. I want to thank you for this important step in protecting our water resources.
Next speaker is Curtis Baines.
Mr. Baines, name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good evening. Curtis Baines, 1323 East Tennessee Street. I want to bring your attention to a, to a matter that I think was brought up when we first heard this a couple of months ago, and that is whether or not we're, we're choosing the right vehicle here, a request for proposals, or whether we need to take a process with an invitation to negotiate what we're trying to do. And, and what I had done the last time we met is I tried to, to tell you what my expectations were in the hopes of trying to get you to think along the same lines. And I think this is more than a, than a matter of sustainability. This is a matter of growth. Leon County is growing, is going to continue to grow, and the question that, that is going to be before you eventually is how are we going to deal with the growth maintaining our environmental standards, giving our land use planning? And those are the issues that are within your jurisdiction. In the past, we have typically relied upon passive systems to, to deal with this, which have been pretty good at, at protecting the health of the public, but not very good at preventing pollution. So, there's a, there are big part of the septic tank issue that has gone unchecked for decades because we've been concerned with public health, which we should be, but we've long ignored the pollutant from septic tanks. What we're looking for here, I think, is a comprehensive approach to how we're going to deal with wastewater treatment in the future. And that, that goes from what we're going to do in the urban service area, in the primary springs protection zone, to what we're going to do in the urban service area north of the Cody SCARP, to what we're going to do outside the primary springs protection zone and inside the primary protection zone, where there's higher density versus lower density, and whether we're going to go back and improve existing facility, existing treatment systems, retrofit those, upgrade those, how we're going to do that. And I, what I'm looking for and what my expectation would be, and I hope that you would agree with me at some point, if you hear from me enough, is that when this is finished, we will know what we have to do to protect our water from not just health endangerment, but also pollutant contamination. And with that, maybe you are the body that would implement it. Perhaps at some point, we need to think in terms of a much bigger body to deal with specifically water and wastewater treatment. Thank you.
The final speaker. The final speaker on this item is Robert Dial.
Robert, name and address, sir. We did exactly what you asked us to do.
I appreciate that, sir. My name's Robert Dial. I reside at 2409 Oakdale Street in Tallahassee. I'm a professor emeritus of environmental planning at FSU, Vice Chair of the Wakulla Springs Alliance, and a member of DEP, so-called OSTDS. That's Septic Tank Advisory Committee. And on Thursdays, I drive riverboats at Wakulla Springs. Please come down and take a ride with me someday. You should have received a letter via You should have received a letter via email from me last week on behalf of the Wakulla Springs Alliance concerning this RFP, and I wanted to just reiterate two points that we made in that letter. The first is to bang the drum that Debbie Lysick and Pam Hall have already banged. I'd like to give it one more whack here. And that is to ensure that the RFP is crystal clear, that the intent is to fully assess alternatives to central sewer throughout the entire unincorporated county, including those 14 areas, unsewered target areas defined in the master sewer plan, including Woodville. Again, with the rationale that this plan will give us information we did not have when we made those initial designations about the cost-effectiveness and other benefits and costs of alternative technologies that may serve us better than sewers in some of those areas. And I'd also want to just emphasize that the folks that brought this idea forward in the first place as a blueprint project had that in mind right from the onset. That has been the intent. I'd also like to reiterate a point made in our letter, which is to really raise up our appreciation for the exemplary process that staff has taken on this particular project to not only respond to comments, but actually invite comments from both the OSTDS advisory committee, but also other concerned citizens, recognizing that the citizenry of this community have been involved in and concerned about these issues for a very long time, and developed a certain amount of expertise of their own. I think that the result is already evident in the improvements in the RFP between the first version and the one you've got before you today. And I think, in that light, I'd also like to encourage you to, when you do approve this RFP, to direct your staff to follow up with the technical comments that Pam Hall and the Wakulla Springs Alliance have offered in supplement to what we submitted before. The approach of addressing each comment with some sort of response as to what's going to be done with it, or why not, possibly considering face-to-face conversations where something may be a little deeper and more complex. I think that would serve us well to get us with an excellent product. And finally, I'd like to also endorse the suggestion that Alan Niderroda just made, which is to consider some sort of method by which citizens can continue to serve as a sounding board as you work through the plan, rather than waiting till it's completely finished to get citizen input. I want to thank you for your careful attention to this issue and your capacity as members of the Intergovernmental Agency in bringing this forward, as well as your commitment to involving us all throughout this process. I think we can all be very proud of what's going on here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That was our last speaker. Commissioners, I have Commissioner Proctor in queue to speak. I also have, followed by him, Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Proctor, you have the floor, sir.
Chairman, Commissioners, I've worked on this issue for 1,000 years now. I'm persuaded by attachment nine, which is Dr. Deel's comments, who was just closing out there for citizens. We have a plethora of compelling arguments that were put forward by citizens all throughout, supporting this work. We would be just confoundingly dense if we did not, I think, pause to integrate some of the comments that have come to us tonight. I think that we want the train to leave the station, but it's better for the train to leave a little late and have everything and everybody, all the goods on board, than to take off on time, so to speak, and then left half the cargo behind. I would recommend to the board tonight that, given the influence of leading experts, the impressive array of citizenry who comprise Wakulla Springs Alliance and their comments, we would be well-guided if we subcon to their directions, that we pause a little bit. I'm not willing for the citizens necessarily to become the engineers, conductors of the train, but I, you think that Ms. Hiker's done a huge job over the years in this area. I'd like for her to remain the conductor, but I think that we can certainly receive wide input, integrate where we can. That's overall what I think we ought to do tonight. Chairman, might I say just, you know, historically speaking, that these are finite resources, and I somewhat, when I hear Commissioner Lysick says that we need to do a countywide, well, we do, but we ain't got so much money. And I want to make sure that what makes the bias in our being a little more geographic specific in this sewer area, and what has made the south end of the county in terms of the absence of sewer its most compelling, is the fact that it is eight feet above the aquifer when groundwater tables are full. It's because it has the most identifiable karst features and sinkholes. And we look at the county, this topography from the north end being 182 feet through red clay on the north side, and you come down that hill, and you get down to sand, and you're down to eight, nine feet to water on the south side. So, to the extent that Wakulla Springs has been a dynamic in our focus in nitrogen reduction, the fact that the city's spray field is down there, the fact that the city's waste treatment plant is down there, it has driven our focus. It is not that we're not being fair and trying to do all of the, the truth is, when you're talking about protecting the groundwater, it's hard to get through 182 feet of clay. I don't know how many yards that equal. Might I also state that in terms of what makes this more geographic specific is that this county commission, we had targeted a ordinance that would have required citizens in the Wakulla Springs protection area to mandatorily sign up for the new septic tank, which was a thing that we were told was $10,000 to $12,000. And we only had two or three legitimate contractors, so even if everybody had signed up, the rate in which the contractors could have gotten to everybody, they would not have been in compliance. Something was wrong with that from the giddyup because it could not accommodate 100%, 70%, even 50% of the people participating. We have to look at this area also, the south end, because it's affordable housing, and there's been a concern for commercial development in the area that has been underserved with commercial development. I can't remember what size pipes you need in the ground, but we need some big pipes under that ground so that we can have commercial facilities on top of the ground. And if the equitable idea and equity issue here, which gives bias to our investment in the south end, if you don't buy geography, if you don't buy Wakulla Springs protection, if you don't buy the city and its spray field and waste treatments in that area, if you don't buy all of that, then perhaps it ought to be compelling that for the vice chairman's district and my district, we have people who live down the street and around the corner from the sewer treatment plant, but who cannot access it for service. And whereas the inequity of all of this sewer treatment stuff is that Commissioner Deloge has folk 15, 16, 17 miles away from the treatment plant, and they do have access to the treatment plant. So equity is a compelling dynamic as to why sewer, the focus with finite resources, it ought to be focused, and the lead area has to be where the karst features are, where the people who round the corner down the street can't get in, but people from 17 miles up can. So those are concerns which signal my awareness of this issue as it evolves over time. I'm respectful, appreciative. I don't know at all about this matter, but I think that we have strong members of the community, and I think we would be wise tonight to yield and to allow an integration of their thoughts. And I don't even know how that's supposed to occur, but I know that Teresa needs to stay in charge, and whatever we sift out in the amalgamation of these ideas, it should come back and it ought to be ready to go. So, Mr. Attorney, if there's a motion that I could make in that regard, that's the one I want to make tonight.
Whatever motion you just made, and Commissioner Daley's seconding it, I hope you get it, Ms. Voss.
Yeah. Well, the motion simply is to, that we would go back out, I don't know if we need a citizens' group to sit down, da-da-da, but that we would target a lot of these ideas, let Ms. Hiker group get together and work this out and bring it back.
Motion on the floor is for a citizens' group, for us to put together a citizens' group to look at these options and for us to come back to this board for approval at a later date. That motion's been made by Commissioner Proctor. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Daley. Commissioner Proctor, I did get that motion correct, right? Ms. Voss, you understand the motion on the floor? Good, good, good. Commissioner Dozier, you have the floor. Commissioners, I'd like to let you know, just go ahead and take your time. What we're going to do is we're going to break, we're going to push through this agenda. We're going to break this agenda at, I'm sorry, this, I'm sorry, general business at 6 o'clock for our public hearing. We're going to take up public hearing, go through our commission discussion time, and then go straight into dinner after that. There's no need in us breaking for 15 minutes. Commissioner Dozier, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate, well, let me step back for a second. We have had a tremendous amount of citizen comments and involvement in this, and I appreciate everyone who's taken the time to do this, not just for commenting on the RFP, but for years and years working on this issue, whether it's on commission, Commissioner Lysick, or as volunteers. And the experts, the expertise that we have in this room that's been helping work with our experts and the staff is just phenomenal. This is time where all have a lot of energy, want to get to a plan, right? We have studied this a lot. I appreciate the comments that we have, Lombardo report, other things that should be given to the consultants. So, I'm, if it's the will of the commission to hold off on this and let us work through it and address some of these, I will support that. But I do wonder if, based on some of the comments we've heard tonight, we can start moving this ball forward because of the county administrator's direction, and as you've heard from a lot of the public comments, we've already incorporated a tremendous number of the comments from these various committees and community members who have stayed engaged in this process. So, with that, and picking up on Bob's two points here, and I do want to say, I love it that you're driving the boat at Wakulla Springs so often, and when, every Thursday, I would love to do that. And when we were talking, you told me that you had a conversation about how to use the glass-bottomed boats. I mean, that was just, that was such an exceptional thing when I was a kid. I'm sure we were all doing, but you said you used them for an education purpose, to talk about why the spring is so dirty, why you can't see the bottom anymore, why it looks the way it does. I think that's a great thing, to repurpose the boats, because hopefully it'll inspire other people to push forward here. So, if there is a way to respond to some of the additional comments, the technical comments, and keep this ball moving forward, have people work with staff to keep this ball moving forward and still pass this tonight, I would love that. My one real question, Mr. County Administrator, which I will say I dug into after our briefing, so I've not been able to ask about it yet, is this issue of looking at all areas within the unincorporated, and I understand what the staff, I appreciate the table and the agenda item, and the staff comments and reason for exclusion, I believe if I have this right, that it conflicts with the comprehensive plan, that we were directing sewer to be extended in certain areas. Am I reading that and hearing that right, Ms. County Administrator?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, yeah, and hopefully, just to back up a little bit, hopefully, again, it's evident that we've been very receptive and appreciative of all the input that we've got. The only places where we've hesitated to accept that feedback has been where we felt like it was either in conflict or contradicted the previous board direction, in which case we needed that specific policy guidance from you. In this case, just about the only thing we would need that additional guidance on from you, and that's what you'd see when we come back to you next week, is relative to those 14 target areas. Again, some, they're all different. 10 of them might be just fine to go out and be reevaluated, but there may be some where the board has taken specific policy direction to say, no, we're further down the road than that. We have, for example, and some of those were in design for sewer and have spent millions of dollars, or are spending, or are dedicating millions of dollars to that. And in others, there may be other commitments relative to sewers in certain neighborhoods, certain parts of the county. So we would just simply ask that we bring that back to you, and with all of that information, again, the board could give us that direction on all, or how many of those you want us to include in that analysis. We don't argue with the logic of that analysis, which is to take a fresh look at that. It's just that in some cases, it may bump up against previous direction.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. I am persuaded that we need to look at this holistically, where if we're going to engage a consultant and look at this, the technology has changed, the comp plan's been there for a long time. We're closer to the end of this comp plan than we are to the beginning of it, so a lot of things may change in the future. Can we get that back by our next meeting, which is maybe third week of January or so? Is that possible? And in that time, I believe this is part of the motion, we can reflect on the other comments that were made as well, and not just the scope of the, or the area of the study? Is that right? Okay. Well, I can support the motion on the table. I just want to keep the momentum going, so I would like to see this come back as quickly as possible. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Motion on the floors presented by Commissioner Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Daley. Ms. Voss, you understand the motion? Commissioners, any questions on the motion? All those in favor of the motion on the floor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries objection. I tell you what, Commissioners, let's take about 10 minutes, come back in here at 6 o'clock, and recess.